We are back. Welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting this Monday evening, March 18th. I now call this meeting to order. I invite everyone to join in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Deputy Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Hedges.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Newsom.
Here.
Mayor Diaz Nash.
Here. At this time, I will ask our deputy city clerk if any notifications or requests for virtual meeting participation have been received from any members of the council due to just cause or emergency circumstances.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have received no such requests.
All right, thank you. So we are excited to be here in person with options who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. If these options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. So now we are going to move into the ceremonial section of our meeting, which is a happy, happy time. And for the first item, I would love to call down Ms. Gloria Brown to receive the Mayor's Quarterly Hero Award. So you have to listen to me for just a couple minutes, okay? Okay, so tonight I am honored and delighted to present my first Mayor's Quarterly Hero Award to Gloria Brown, a longtime San Mateo resident, lifelong advocate of community and wellness, and one of the most generous people I know when it comes to sharing her wisdom and experience to help others achieve their goals. Gloria models herself after the late Congressman John Lewis, getting into lots of good trouble with a smile on her face and steel in her backbone. I could not agree more. This award was started by our former mayor and current Assemblywoman Diane Pappin to honor a member of our San Mateo community who has made San Mateo a better place. That description fits Gloria perfectly. Gloria already has been honored before for a lifetime of community work. She has improved the health and well-being of so many as well as ensuring the organizations she works with have solid foundations for the long term. That is a mark of Gloria's thoughtful and strategic mind as well as her caring heart. Tonight, though, I want to focus on what she's done most recently for San Mateo. Gloria has worked closely with the San Mateo Police Department to improve their interactions with vulnerable people with special needs who may react differently when contacted. This has resulted in enhanced Alzheimer's awareness training for all peace officers and the creation of Project Guardian, a free voluntary and confidential database offered by the San Mateo Police Department. This registry gives the department quick access to critical information about a registered vulnerable person in the event of an emergency. This is, once again, an illustration of how Gloria thinks of all the aspects of a situation and all that is needed to solve the problem. Gloria, as we all know, loves her North Central neighborhood and always is looking to ensure that others do as well. When new bike lanes, as we were just talking about, were installed on North Humboldt Street, taking out many parking spots, the neighbors were up in arms. Rather than complain, Gloria worked with her neighbors to organize walking tours for City Council and city staff so we could see the impact of this action on her neighborhood. She kept up the good trouble pressure and persuaded our council last year to support the development of a North Central Complete Streets Plan that we just heard about that would fully engage North Central residents in deciding the future of transportation in their neighborhood. Most recently, I also heard from Gloria about a seniors' gentle aerobics class offered via the San Mateo Parks and Rec. Gloria's interests are from the most strategic to the most important. That class was being discontinued despite having several seniors enrolled and loving the program. Gloria reached out to Parks and Rec Director Joanne McGreeney, who worked closely with her to extend the class and look for future funding. Gloria's calm but persistent approach makes everybody want to work with her, and I know Director McGreeney would agree with that. Gloria may call herself a senior, but she is young at heart, in mind, and body. She is an active mentor to our diverse community of youth to set the future course for San Mateo. For all this and more, I am thrilled to present my first Mayor's Quarterly Hero Award to San Mateo's Queen of Good Trouble, Gloria Brown. Would you care to say a few words?
To Mayor Nash and the other members of the council, thank you so very much. I am just thrilled and honored. And you're right, being a longtime resident of the city of San Mateo, I've seen a lot, experienced a lot, and I will continue to promote the kinds of programs that will better not only the North Central residents but residents throughout the city of San Mateo. It's kind of fun getting into good trouble at my age. Thank you so much again.
So we would like to present Ms. Brown with a certificate of recognition. The city of San Mateo hereby recognizes Gloria Brown, 2024 Mayor's Quarterly Hero Award, March 18th, 2024. All the people that she's going through, make all the changes she does, I'm just so grateful. Long time, I was wild, I didn't stand a chance. All right, let us move on to our second ceremonial item, which is a presentation about Hillsdale High School's Peace Pantry and Empowerment Through Action programs. And it will be given by Brett Stevenson, the Dean of Students at Hillsdale High School, and Rachel Lauderdale, the Empowerment Through Action Executive Director. Welcome. We are very much looking forward to hearing what you have to say.
Good evening, council. Thank you for having us tonight. Really like to thank Adam Lorraine, Alex, for coming out a month ago and inviting us to speak to you tonight. Want to thank the chief, who's a partner in our work with the Police Activities League. So thank you for having us. My name is Brett Stevenson. I'm the Dean of Students and Co-Executive Director of a program called Empowerment Through Action, or ETA, at Hillsdale High School. I'm also a proud Hillsdale, as are several of my colleagues that are here tonight. Before I begin, we ask our students a lot of times to reflect on their journey, and I'm going to ask all of you to reflect on your journey for a moment and go back to when you were in high school. And think about that critical adult who was a mentor or coach. Reflect on the support you had academically. Reflect on the opportunities you may have had to participate in athletics or visual and performing arts, perhaps visiting college campuses, museums, or other parts of the state. Lastly, think about the importance of having a job in high school or maybe a summer internship. Empowerment Through Action's sole mission is to ensure that every student has these types of opportunities and supports, which are critical in our development as young people prepare for life beyond high school. Similar to your role in City Council, high schools in San Mateo have to wrestle with the growing income inequality, which leads to an ever widening opportunity gap for students and families. Let's be honest, access to $115 an hour physics tutor, private music lessons, or joining a dance studio are cost prohibitive for so many students and families. Consider the opportunity to play club soccer or AAU basketball, which costs thousands of dollars and simply are out of reach for many families in San Mateo. How about just paying rent in San Mateo or paying for weekly groceries, school clothes, and essential items? Hillsdale wanted to have an actual response to the challenges so many of our students and families face on a daily basis. Empowerment Through Action at Hillsdale is a grassroots and community-based program that started at Hillsdale six years ago with 60 students and 12 adults, and has grown to support over 250 Hillsdale students and families who are furthest from opportunity and who are living on the margins of San Mateo. ETA is attempting to close the opportunity gap to ensure that every student at Hillsdale has access to mentors trained in trauma literacy and restorative practice who facilitates weekly affinity groups where we focus on social and emotional learning. ETA then attempts to connect students to a series of actions which leads to individual and collective empowerment. Actions like access to high-quality tutoring in a warm and welcoming environment after school, access to enrichment activities that bring joy and self-confidence, access to job opportunities and internships in a potential area of interest, access to weekly groceries, organic fruits and vegetables, and seasonal clothing and essential items. I'd like to turn this over to my colleague and dear friend, Ed Kandev.
Good evening. Who are the kids we're trying to serve? 24% of them would be the first ones to graduate from high school. So of our group, 77% of them would be the first ones to graduate from college. I'm the ELD counselor for students at Hillsdale High School, so half of our students are also in this program. We have, back in 2018, there were 63, but because of the pandemic and all of the learning loss and all the needs that have our families have surfaced, we feel like we have to address them. So now we serve 276 students. Most of them, almost all of them, are of color, low socioeconomic, and they find themselves to be one of those marginalized groups. And so I don't know how many of you or our audience identify to be part of a marginalized group. They are seeking a place to have connection, community, and a space to be heard from people from our school.
Hey, everyone. I'm Rachel Lauderdale. I'm a teacher at Hillsdale and one of the co-executive directors and the only one of us who didn't graduate from Hillsdale, so I'm kind of the odd man out. The students in ETA deserve the same opportunities and supports as the rest of our student population, and we have high hopes and expectations for the 270 students currently in ETA. Through the empowering actions you'll hear about tonight, we hope our students will feel connected to a purposeful activity on campus. Through the supports in ETA, our students will develop skills to address the stress in their lives in healthy and healing ways. They will come to school more often and they will graduate from high school. As our students become old enough, we will place them in a job and/or internship and support them through that journey. Our students build the right skills and connections to be prepared for their post-high-school life, whether that is going to a two-year or four-year college, into a trade, a career, or into the military. Most importantly, empowerment through action creates hope. Hope that we can be, or they can be, whoever they want to be and everything we know they can be, no matter their circumstances.
How you doing? I'm DeShawn Mitchell. I'm the Student Success Coordinator at Hillsdale. I run the CRC, the Community Resource Center. This is our space where it's the hub of growth for our students, where they can come in and be their authentic selves. The value is, one of our most important things is our affinity circles and the restorative work. It's being, again, alumni, it's one of the greatest things I've ever had a chance, it's one of the greatest things I've ever been a part of, to be honest with you. In the CRC also, we have an ETA rise where we work with study time, Monday, I'm sorry, Tuesday, I'm a little nervous to be here, Tuesday through Friday, and tutors come in and work with our students, and we try to close the gap because, you know, tutors are $150 an hour, so we try to give our students all the resources they can have. Enrichment activities, another dear thing to me. All of our enrichment activities are rooted in social-emotional growth. We have, as you see, we have our soccer team, basketball. We do entertainment where they get a chance to learn at a DJ or booking, and we have a dodgeball that just started this week, which is a lot of fun. They can get some of that aggression out. And what's incredible is we have our CRC Cafe where they learn their entrepreneurial skills and budgeting and everything that comes along with running a cafe. That is open Tuesday through Friday in the morning, so I'm inviting everyone in here to come get some incredible coffee by our baristas. Our students are incredible. So again, thank you, guys. I'm very happy to be here.
Just to add, for a lot of these programs, it's our first time our students actually part of a program, especially in sports. So a lot of them, they come from families that don't have the money to get them in the leagues before, so at high school level, they're unable to play on the team. So I know Dr. Schellman's over back there, too, who's a coach for our bridge team, and we get out there and we see, these are nice slides, but what you're not feeling is the joy that it brings and the connection that the kids feel about being connected to their school, and that brings something. It keeps them off the streets, it makes them feel proud of themselves, it makes them want to go to school, and we use it, right, Dr. Schellman, to motivate them to be part of school and do well, and it's part of, again, they're part of our school, part of our community.
Forgive me, I just want to say, I want to say thank you so much to Powell for helping us be able to make this happen, so I don't want to leave without that. Thank you.
Hey, everyone. I'm Sabina Lopez, and I am the ETA Bridge-to-Bridge Program Coordinator, Job and Internship Coordinator, and one of the tutors at our after-school tutoring center. So in addition to all we've discussed, another empowering action that we like to provide our students is job and internship placement. Our goal in ETA is if by a student's junior year, if they're ready and willing to be in a job, that we can place them in one through partnerships that we've created with local companies and organizations that we've connected with and maintained connection with over the course of the year. Based on a student's individual needs, we provide support on all aspects of job and internship placement, from research to application completion, to interview training, and finally to any post-placement issues such as negotiating raises or management concerns. We know as well as you do how not only fulfilling it can be to get your first job and have that sense of accomplishment and independence, but also how important it can be for an adolescent's development and building that self-efficacy and preparedness as they head off into their next adventure once they leave our campus. So in partnership with Police Activities League, we were fortunate enough last year to implement a pilot program that is officially starting its second year called ETA Bridge-to-Bridge, where our goal was to create a bridge from eighth-grade first-generation students to Hillsdale and then a bridge for 12th-grade bridge students to either a two- or four-year college and/or career path. So this model focuses on an 8.5 and 12.5 structure and helps, and our goal is to help kind of navigate the social and educational transition post-pandemic that we've recognized more than ever have been severely impacted. So with Bridge 8.5, we've worked with Abbott Elementary to identify 32 students who have and will have begun affinity groups, starting their spring semester of their last year in middle school, and continuing to do so each week as well as into their four years of high school, so that will continue. They also will be visiting our campus once a month and participating in the Summer Bridge Program in order to give them all the tools and resources that they need to thrive for their next four years here, one being that 16 out of the 32 will also be placed into a guided studies course to really work on that academics, building that academic muscle. For our 12.5 model, we have partnership with CSM to start to work and assist in providing them with the steps to really feel connected to their campus next year and starting to see all of those resources and opportunities that are available for them during their two years. And lastly, our goal is to sort of keep that momentum and can maintain connection with them all the way into their fall semester of whatever their post-high-school plan is and make sure that they get their questions answered and that they feel support all the way through and are happy and feeling great.
I think another component to empowerment through action is the work that we're doing in our Peace Pantry. So every Friday, we support about 150 families, Hillsdale families, that are food insecure, and we provide a week's worth of groceries partnering with Second Harvest Food Bank. And then we purchase essential items, cultural food staples from the Rancho Market every other week. We've launched a community garden where we produced about 1,500 pounds of organic fruits and vegetables that we're able to distribute directly to our families every Friday morning. And this August, we launched a community closet to ensure that our students have almost brand-new school clothes, winter coats, other essential items throughout the year.
So through all of these amazing things, our students in empowerment through action have had great success over the last few years. Since 2018, we've seen a 50% reduction in suspension rates for our students in the program compared to the rest of the school. Incredibly, 97% of our ETA students graduated from high school last year compared to the 82% of socioeconomically similar students. We survey our students every spring to collect qualitative data as well, and 73% of our students reported that being part of ETA has helped them feel more confident, and 70% of students reported that they learned more positive ways to respond to their stress. We're so excited this year that nine of our students were chosen to win the San Mateo Police Activities League Scholarship, and will be celebrated this Friday at their Lights and Sirens event. Through the support of our program, our students can achieve greatness.
All right, we're almost finished here. So I think one of the reasons we're here tonight is to really think about partnerships within the larger community. We, I think our partnership with IBW and the Police Activity Leagues is an example of the type of partnerships we're looking to build. Hillsdale's geographical location, our boundaries for students and families, is essentially south of Highway 92 to the Belmont border, east and west of the 101 freeway, and then Foster City as well. And so we're really looking for community members that are interested in helping join a volunteer committee to support placing our students in jobs and internships, community members that are interested in assisting with tutoring, academic support after school. We're building out a community liaison team to really provide outreach to the larger community. We have a lot of talented people in the Hillsdale community that could provide enrichment activities, and then we're always looking for folks that are willing to volunteer at our Peace Pantry, community garden, and our community closet. I think if we go to the next slide, the big one for us is that funding is always an issue. And so we are launching a donor fund for the next three school years, and our goal is to raise $1.5 million. We're two-thirds of the way there, and by December 31st, we need to raise about a half a million dollars. And so we're hoping that in partnership with local leaders, local business owners, companies who are right here in our geographical boundary, how do we start to partner with these companies and align to their DEI philosophy, goals, and objectives and support a program like this? This is a very unique program that was built from the ground up, and we're really looking for broader support from the larger community. Thank you for having us tonight, and thank you, everyone in the audience, for your patience. We appreciate it.
Any comments, questions? Congressman, no? Okay.
It's so good to see you, Brett, in the flesh.
Yeah, good to see you as well.
And I'm so glad that Councilmember Lorraine had the wisdom to invite you here tonight to do this presentation. And I've been watching this program grow exponentially over the last five years and have been sending many volunteers your way. And my pitch is always that, you know, this program is truly unique because it is transformation from the inside out, right? And what I love about the program is it's not based around a deficit model. It's really focusing on core strengths, enriching what's already inside these wonderful kids. And so I really am excited about the ways that you're asking community to participate and plug in. One of the council priorities that I put forward just this year was to increase opportunity for workforce development for young people, specifically looking at how we can maximize and expand our paid internship and fellowship opportunities. And I would love to see that program extended to ETA students and graduates specifically. This is a pool of candidates that has so much to contribute to our city and municipal government services and provide pathways into public service, right? And I guess I just want to call out one more thing, which is that we just got through the North Central Complete Streets Analysis Update, and I would look to ETA to be a really incredible partner. A lot of their students are living in North Central, right? These are exactly the kind of partnerships that we want to cultivate when we're thinking about meeting community where they are and making sure that underrepresented community voices are part of conversations. So I want to name those two things as takeaways from this presentation specifically, and I look forward to a very successful update about your fundraising.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lorraine. Yeah. Go ahead.
Thank you, folks, very much for being here tonight and giving a thorough presentation of all the amazing work you're doing in a format that can reach our community who's here today, but also more broadly. And I want to thank Councilmember Lee for introducing me to Brett and the Hillsdale team. She said, hey, you should really, you know, go over there, talk to, then, I guess, Assistant Principal Stevenson and see what's going on. There's a lot of amazing stuff, and I was blown away. I've had the privilege of attending a Peace Pantry and seeing work in the garden with Peninsula Multi-Faith Coalition for Martin Luther King Day and seeing children in the Community Resource Center. And it's, and, you know, two big things stood out to me. One is that, you know, a lot of people, when they think about District 5 or, you know, the Hillsdale area, they think, you know, about how nice it is and that a lot of folks, you know, may be doing well. And while that is true, there are also many folks who need, who need help to have even some of the basics. And so it's not, you know, we have equity priority communities in our city, but really, you know, citywide, countywide, we're aware that there's more that we can do to bridge the gaps, and this program is doing that. It doesn't get more local than this program when it comes to helping people. You can help your neighbors and community members through this program. I just wanted to, you know, appreciate Councilmember Lee's Blue Sky Priority. I also happen to put forth a priority this year to look into creating a community grant program beyond the community development block grants that we currently have, to see what the city can do through general fund and really, of course, the community to help programs such as this in our communities. But, you know, as the team noted, it's going to take more. It really takes everybody to support a program like this and make it work so that we can reach as many students as possible, as many folks in the city and beyond. So I encourage others to participate how they can. And yeah, the partnership idea is well-taken. I will do what I can to think of other ways in which, you know, through my other employer, through my neighborhood and community groups that I attend, ways in which we can connect the dots and partner with this group. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hedges.
Yes, I want to also thank Councilmember Lorraine. This is such a wonderful program. I was aware of it exponentially through my work with the Building Trades and Electrician's Union. I would love to see this program extended to other crafts. I think it's amazing. These construction jobs can give amazing life to people. I was a recipient for many years of a construction job, which made me live far above what I experienced as a child. And so the one thing I would really like to see, and it's been really failing all over the country, is take- the country, is taking trades education out of the high schools. We really want to retain, retain children in high school from low-income families. Give them something to do with their hands during the day. When I walked onto a construction job, I could read blueprints and start laying out the material because of my trades education in high school before I was told by my journeymen fitters what to do. So I think it's so important and would help our dropout rate if we did that. And I know you're working toward that, and I think we should all work toward it. Often when I raise this meeting, people tell me, well, we do it at the community college level. We really don't, but that's what they believe. But we really need to do it at the high school level. So thank you very much for what you're doing. Anything I can help, my information is easily to, to gain, and please contact me to work with you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
I don't have much to add, other than keep up the great work. And if I can be of help in any way, you know how to find me. But also, you know, I appreciate all you're doing. About a good portion of your district, or my district, is, are your students. And so anything that I can do, I'm happy to do so, and just keep up the great work. Great program.
And I will just add two quick things. Number one, turn around and look at all the people who you can partner with that are here today. These are community members of San Mateo. So I invite everybody here to think about all of your networks, all of your connections. How can you help? How can you introduce the ETA team to others? And if it's a crazy idea, don't worry about it. It might be the best idea ever. And then the other wish I have for you, because it's just so wonderful to hear all about this, is that in maybe 10 years, maybe none of us will be here, maybe none of you will be here, but maybe all the graduates of your program will be presenting to City Council. I give you that challenge, but thank you all for being here tonight.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. So we have a very different type of program now. We are going to have Crossing Guard Appreciation Month recognition. And Kasia Ravi, who is the Safe Routes to School Coordinator within Public Works, is going to talk to us about this. And for everyone who was here before who talked about how dangerous it is getting to school and preventing accidents, you want to hear about this. So thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Honorable Mayor, and all the members of the council. Yeah, my name is Kasia Ravi. I'm the Safe Routes to School Coordinator for the city of San Mateo. And firstly, I want to thank the council for taking time this evening to recognize this really crucial and important work that our crossing guards do throughout the city of San Mateo. This week is Crossing Guard Appreciation Week in San Mateo County, and April is Crossing Guard Appreciation Month throughout the country. And we are so delighted this evening to have a number of our crossing guards from across the city here. I'm going to just say a few words, and then we'll have a chance to meet them. So firstly, I want to say that every day, every school day, of which there are 180, rain or shine, our crossing guards are out there on the streets, protecting our children and family, helping them safely cross the street, get to and from school. And without that, our children would not necessarily even be able to arrive to learn. So it's a super crucial function that they are providing. They're often mentors, and so many in their communities look up to them. They're the first smiling face that many members of their communities see. And we are just so delighted, as a city, to be able to work with also the San Mateo Foster City School District to support the crossing guards here in our community. I want to say that the city of San Mateo, as a staff member of San Mateo, is really commuted, committed to supporting safe routes to school throughout this city, promoting increased use of active transportation. And it's our crossing guards that are making it possible, playing an integral role as helping people, pedestrians or people on any kind of wheels, bikes, scooters, skateboards, cross to get, you know, across busy streets to their schools. And we're also committed, as a city, to making sure that children are able to arrive to school safely. So I'm excited to welcome up to the dais our crossing guards. We have, and I also want to invite up Suzie Riley. She'll say a couple of words. She's here from the San Mateo Foster City School District. But yeah, I want to maybe just quickly introduce. We have Joe here from Borrell Middle School. Crossing Guard Joe. And Denise here from Baywood Elementary School, who I understand for any special day is out there dressed up in a really amazing costume, like recently for Pi Day was out in a Pi costume, energizing the community. And then in a really special model from North Shoreview Montessori, they've actually organized a number of parents and grandparents out there every day to serve their community's volunteer crossing guards. So we have a number of them present, not all of them, but Darren and Hania and Georgina. Thank you all for being here this evening. And so if, if any of the crossing guards themselves would like to share a few words, you're welcome to take my place.
Didn't expect this, but mine is more of an acknowledgement to the city of San Mateo, San Mateo Foster City School District, the San Mateo Police Department, just to the staff and the teachers at Borrell who have been very supportive. And I really appreciate it, but I get a lot of enjoyment in serving the community, especially the Borrell Middle School, in providing a safe avenue for the kids to cross and also for the drivers and the parents and grandparents that come and for exhibiting safe driving roles. So thank you so much, and I really appreciate it. And thank you for the support to all the, the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise Fournier, Baywood. I'd like to thank everyone for not hitting me every day. I'd like to, to thank the parents who wave when they drive by and for, for the energy and for the opportunity to get to know the kids. I've worked at Baywood, this is my ninth year, and I see the kids that I've known when they were little, and I see them when they're going to high school, and we give each other the elbows. And, and it's kind of a great way for, for me to start my day, and I think for some of them to start their day. And I really enjoy being a crossing guard, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to do so. And for Principal Felix, for, for her leadership at Baywood, and for Jody, who works in the office and helps give the tardy slips to the people that I see. So yeah, it's a, it's a wonderful experience to be a crossing guard, and I'm really grateful to be one. Thank you.
Denise, I just want to commend you on your costume last Friday in honor of St. Patrick's Day. I walked by you, you were all in green, jumping all over. Yes, it was great. Yep. Okay, we have some wonderful certificates that I will wait until these lovely ladies say their piece.
I just want to thank everybody and especially our principal, North Shoreview Montessori. She's always out there helping us and guiding us and making sure there is, all the kids are crossing safe. It's a job that we enjoy, is a voluntary job that we enjoy, saying hello and bye to all the kids and the parents and keeping them safe. Thank you, San Mateo, city of San Mateo, for giving us the opportunity.
Thank you.
Hi, Lisa. Thank you very much.
Nice to see you in costume. Yeah, thank you. And Darren, thank you very, very much. And Hania.
Thank you.
Georgina?
Thank you.
Very much.
Want us to face out?
Yes, I'll show you later. That's right. All right, we have a final resolution proclamation, which is very important for all of us. Maybe if we can close the, the doors. Because as we all know, we are now in Ramadan Mubarak observation, and I would like to raise, read a proclamation. Whereas Ramadan commenced the evening of Sunday, March 10th, 2024, and lasts through Tuesday, April 9th, 2024, and whereas Ramadan is the holy month of fasting and spiritual renewal for Muslims worldwide and is observed with faithful intention, communal prayer, and reading of the Holy Quran scripture. And whereas the observance of Ramadan is an opportunity for individuals of all backgrounds to deepen their understanding and appreciation of the values of tolerance, empathy, and mutual respect. And whereas Muslims are a part of the fabric of our community, and the city of San Mateo sends their warmest wishes to Muslims across the Bay Area. And now therefore, I, Lisa Diaz Nash, Mayor of the city of San Mateo, on behalf of myself and on behalf of the city council, hereby recognize the commencement of Ramadan. And be it further resolved that the city of San Mateo acknowledges the onset of Ramadan and expresses its deepest respect to Muslims across California and throughout the world on this significant occasion. Thank you all. So we are going to move on from the ceremonial part of our agenda to the consent calendar. So Deputy City Clerk, could you please read the consent calendar?
With pleasure, Madam Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number five, Organized Retail Theft Prevention Grant Program Memorandum of Understanding and Related Actions. Item number six, Compost Broker Program Amendment. Item number seven, Wastewater Treatment Plant Upgrade and Expansion Project Agreement. Item number eight, Senior Get-A-Ron Transportation Program Agreement Amendment. Item number nine, General Plan Housing Element and Housing Successor Agency 2023 Annual Progress Reports. Item number 10, Wastewater Treatment Plant Immediate Action Project Package II Appropriation and Amendment. And item number 11 has been withdrawn from the agenda at the request of staff, and that is the Peninsula Clean Energy Solar and Storage on Public Programs, excuse me, Public Building Program Power Purchase Agreement. Item number 12, Fiscal Year 2022/23 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report Acceptance. And finally, item number 13, Boards and Commissions Confirm Reappointments and Establish Annual Appointment Subcommittee.
Thank you, Deputy City Clerk. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? No? If any members of the public who wish to comment on any consent calendar item, now would be the time to make your comment. This is for the consent calendar items only. Are there any requests to speak?
Madam Mayor, we have received no requests to speak on the consent calendar.
Okay. Is there then a motion from council to approve the consent calendar?
Approval of the consent calendar, Rich Hedges.
Thank you, and we need a second.
Second.
Thank you very much. So could you read the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Hedges.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Newsom.
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Yes.
And Mayor Diaz Nash.
Yes.
The consent calendar, all items on the consent calendar, apart from item number 11, carry by 5-0 vote.
Thank you very much. So we're moving on to public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents the council from taking action on any item not on the agenda. Your comments may refer to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda.
And just as a reminder for folks in the room and attending via Zoom, if you wish to speak during general public comment, please be advised of the ground rules for meeting decorum. Our motto is give respect, get respect. We do not allow for clapping, cheering, cheering, or other public displays for or against speakers as these can impede diverse viewpoints, and we want to create an environment where all viewpoints can be heard. We will now tally the total number of speakers for general public comment. If you are attending via the remote environment, please raise your hand at this time. Madam Mayor, we have received a total of 22 requests to speak on general public comment.
22. Okay, so then we will have a one-minute public comment, and we will begin now.
Thank you. And just as I'm calling the names, for those in chamber who request to speak on this item, our last speaker will be Zach Kleiman. And if I call your name, please line up against the wall here to my right, and I'll begin with the first three speakers. Our first speaker will be Alec Allison McQueen, followed by Catherine Hart and Alice Robinson.
I'll try to do this in one minute. We need investment in pedestrian bicycle safety in San Mateo. We're not, largely not asking for million-dollar projects. One of the things we are asking for is paint. Paint is powerful. Paint tells motorists where to be and where not to be, as well as for pedestrians and cyclists. Paint helps motorists, pedestrians, and cyclists make better decisions. In the absence of paint, it's a free-for-all, and we all know it's not working very well with the recent accidents we're seeing in our city. So we need red paint for daylighting, yellow and white paint for crosswalks, and green paint for bike lanes. Paint protects people. We're on a troubling path towards more accidents, and without more space for more road capacity, we need to make walking and biking around San Mateo an attractive option for transport by increasing safety. I will close with the definition of a progressive. Favor, favoring or advocating progress, change, improvement, or reform, as opposed to wishing to maintain things as they are.
Thank you.
Let's do this, San Mateo.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Catherine Hart, followed by Alice Robinson and Frank Elliott.
We'll do the Cliff Notes version. I just asked that the council be very careful and do the research when it comes to bike lanes. I pulled these articles from San Francisco regarding Valencia Street is an abomination. It is the worst infrastructure I've ever seen anywhere in the world. Said Mikhail Colton Anderson, a designer and founder of the Copenhagen Design Company. You save lives, you keep people safe by using tried-and-tested techniques. Valencia business owners protest center bike lane. Eddie Duran, owner of Taqueria La Cumbra, Great Burritos, protesting the bike lane. We've been in business for 33 years, and this is the worst six months we've ever seen, said Nick, Nikki DeWald, owner of Blondie's Bar and a director of the Valencia Quarter Merchants Association. We love bikes, but not this bike lane. Business owners such as Elliot Eltawall of Yasmin Restaurant attributes a 30 to 40 decrease in business, 30% decrease in business due to bike lanes.
Thank you.
Zero tourists coming here. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Thank you. Our next speaker will be Alice Robinson, followed by Frank Elliott and Samina.
Good evening, everyone. My name is
My name is Alice, and I have lived on the peninsula since 2018. I'm asking you to add the ceasefire resolution proposed by community members to the agenda for a vote as soon as possible. The proposed resolution will unite our diverse community around one of the core values I know we share: respect for human life. I myself am a Jewish American, and I have met community members from a wide variety of backgrounds through efforts to end the genocide and save lives in Gaza. I'm heartbroken every day as I see footage of Gazan civilians dying in indiscriminate bombing attacks, suffering from hunger and preventable disease, and even being fired upon while trying to access humanitarian aid. In my horror over the genocide in Gaza, I also draw comfort that so many of my neighbors are also mourning the loss of both Israeli and Palestinian lives and working for a more just future. While some have claimed that ceasefire resolutions are divisive, I hope that you will see how many of us from all walks of life have already united to ask you to send a message that San Mateo believes that all our children should grow up in peace and dignity. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Frank Elliott, followed by Samina and Inas.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the application to make Baywood historic. Lack of consensus regarding this issue has led to acrimony in our beloved community. We need you, our leaders, to put us on a better track. Simply said, we want to vote. And that's the title of a resolution I'm proposing tonight for inclusion in your next council meeting. Let Baywood vote. The resolution calls for the city to make sure two-thirds of homeowners consent to this designation. Because of the limit of time, I'm not going to cover everything here, but we're just simply asking for a vote for Baywood. And I would ask Mayor Nash that you not recuse yourself from this vote. This is not about whether it's going to be historic or not, but we just want a voice. So we'd like everybody to let us know whether they're in favor of democracy or not. I'm going to pass around a proposed resolution that has been reviewed by city legal experts.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Samina, followed by Inas and Linda.
Good evening, Council. My name is Samiha. I live in District 5. On March 4th, the City Council voted against agendizing a drafted ceasefire resolution. Over 40 of our community members, majority of whom were from San Mateo, made an earnest appeal to the Council to recognize the resolution as a symbol of peace and humanity. The community members present at that last meeting were lifelong residents, business owners, and students enrolled in the San Mateo School District. We are your constituents. And all we ask is that this Council recognize and listen to the people that live here. Councilmember Hedges, you stated, "I just don't think we should be dealing with it." Something like this just adds to the divide. Staying silent will only add to the divide our community is experiencing. Since we last met two weeks ago, the number of Palestinians killed has increased. Over 30,000 dead, over 13,000 children gone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Inas, followed by Linda and Lena.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Inas. I live in District 1. The proposed ceasefire resolution will not ask the Council to recognize Palestinian liberation or sovereignty. The resolution would instead ask the city to acknowledge the inherent injustice of the indiscriminate killing of civilians and deprivation of food, water, electricity, and medical aid. This is about principle. Councilmember Lorraine, you said, "I agree that the degree of displacement and the loss of thousands of innocent Palestinian lives in Gaza is alarming and tragic. And I agree that there is some local element to this discussion and clearly is affecting so many of us in our community." Councilmember Lorraine, it truly is affecting your community members at a scale that is indescribable. You mentioned the term "loss." Let's talk about what the innocent victims in Gaza have lost. They have lost their homes, their mothers, fathers, children, siblings, their jobs, education, body parts, limbs, their futures, their right to exist. And they have the loss of the acknowledgement for basic human rights.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Linda, followed by Lena and Amina.
Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Linda. I live in District 3. So Councilmember Lee, at the last meeting, you said that you welcome dialogue, and we need our leaders to be moral guides and mirrors. Well, here we are, asking you to allow for a dialogue to take place by agendizing a ceasefire resolution. And we are asking our local leaders to be moral guides by standing against genocide. Israel, like Nazi Germany during World War II, is an occupying power. Like Germany, Israel has created the conditions for starvation and disease in Gaza the way that the Nazis did by creating Jewish ghettos in Europe. To quote journalist Max Blumenthal, "This is the Holocaust of our time." Councilmembers, if you were alive during the Holocaust, would you have expected local city councils in the US at the very minimum to take a moral stand? If the statistics were reversed, and it was 30,000-plus Jews who were killed with US tax dollars, would this be a difficult choice? Please agendize a ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Lena, followed by Amina and Heba.
Good evening, City Councilmembers. My name is Lena, and I'm a resident of District 2. Mayor Nash, at the last City Council meeting, you approached us during the break and thanked us for participating. You asked us to come back. Well, here we are. We are disappointed that you did not feel the need to even weigh in on our request for a ceasefire resolution despite waiting several hours for the meeting to be over. Mayor Nash, when you ran for City Council, you stated the following: "I will take on tough issues for you. I will be transparent for you. I will be accountable to you. I will give you all my energy, creativity, and consideration every day. I will be your independent advocate." Mayor Nash, we are now asking you to be accountable to us, to give us consideration, and to be our independent advocate. San Mateo wants a ceasefire. To put it into perspective for you on how horrific the genocide on Gaza is, since the last time we showed up, over 200 Palestinians were murdered in what is known as the Flower Massacre. Human beings trying to get flour to feed their starving families.
Thank you.
That is their only crime. Is there divisiveness in saying this is wrong? Please agendize a ceasefire resolution and listen to your fellow San Mateans.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Amina, followed by Heba and Samia.
My name is Amina. I have family in District 1. Deputy Newsom, your words truly shocked me the most in all of the City Council meetings I have attended. You stated, "I personally will and do support a ceasefire, and I encourage everything in our power to end" what some people are calling a humanitarian aid. But I don't think that you cannot call it a genocide. This was all great until you followed it up with being against a symbolic ceasefire resolution in the city of San Mateo. You also happen to state that your wife is Palestinian, and so are your children. That was the most shocking part of the speech. I'm not sure how you went home that night to your family knowing that you stood against their community. What was the point of building up all that empathy to follow it up with inaction? It is especially shameful after seeing photos on your public social media account of having a blast at Palestine Day. Our people and culture are not a cloak for you to wear when it's fun, but abandoned when times get tough.
Thank you.
Palestinians are facing genocide. Do not be neutral.
Thank you.
Agendize a resolution now.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Heba, followed by Samia and Bisan Zaro.
Hello. Last council meeting, many folks, including members of this council, mentioned that they think agendizing a ceasefire is beyond the jurisdiction of this council. Please remember, the deadliest weapon on earth is silence. And by not agendizing a ceasefire, you are denouncing your responsibility to humanity and aiding the ongoing genocide. With close to 40,000 Palestinians dead, countless reports of human rights violations, forced famine, and sexual assaults, it is our moral obligation to speak out now. Councilman Newsom, last meeting, you mentioned you're Irish, and your daughters and wife are Palestinian. When voting, I hope you keep in mind the similarities in history between the Irish and Palestinians, such as forced starvation by colonial forces. I also hope no one disregards the Palestinians in your life the way Palestinians in Gaza are being disregarded. I will leave you with a quote spoken by a man who coincidentally declined to be president of Israel in 1952, Albert Einstein. "The world will not be destroyed by those who do evil, but by those who watch them without doing anything."
Thank you.
Ceasefire now.
Our next speaker will be Samia, followed by Bisan Zaro and Batul Zaro.
Good evening. My name is Samia Shouman, and I live in District 3. Thank you for recognizing Ramadan, and know that tonight, those of us who are speaking have not had our dinner yet. I keep wondering every day, all day long, what will it take for people to break their silence? I really do not understand. When will they understand that more than 30,000 people have been killed? Thousands more are under the rubble. Gaza in its entirety is on the brink of famine. Children are dying of starvation, dehydration, while food is a mere few miles away. Hospitals, medical aid are now non-existent. Women are laboring. Babies are undergoing C-sections with no anesthesia. Journalists are being wholesale murdered. What will it take to convince you that calling for a ceasefire is to call for people to live, to say that we matter, our voices, stories, and our humanity matter? I keep wondering, what do I have to say for you to break your silence and convince you to agendize a ceasefire resolution?
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Bisan, followed by Batul and Zach.
My name is Bisan. I'm a District 2 resident. Though I would rather be at home with my family to break my fast, I'm here to fulfill my moral obligations. I'm here again to ask you to agendize a ceasefire resolution. I was really upset with some of the things that I witnessed last month at the City Council meeting. To start, the overpolicing was unnecessary. Are you afraid of your constituents? Or your neighbors? Just a question. Another was that there was no objection when a racist comment was made: straight Islamophobia and anti-Arab sentiments. I have sent an email to some of you, and I'm still waiting to be acknowledged. I hope you look through your inbox and respond to me when you get a chance. I've heard your words of sympathy, and although well-intended, we demand action. A ceasefire resolution is the bare minimum. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Batul, followed by Zach and Noble Mushtaq.
Good evening, members of the Council. My name is Batul, and I live in District 2. Last meeting, I was deeply disturbed by a lot of ignorance comments made by my fellow community members, and I wanted to directly address a few of them. The first one being the commenters stating that the Council should focus on items like parking or traffic. I'm a civil engineer who works for a public agency, and I've been having a really hard time thinking about parking ordinance when my immediate family is experiencing an increase in aggression from the Israeli occupation forces. I'm having a really hard time focusing on addressing congestion in the mobility plan when Palestinians are dying in the tens of thousands. I can't focus on our water system master plan when kids in Gaza are losing their limbs. It's my job to be a civil engineer, but it's my moral obligation to speak up against genocide. The second item I wanted to address was people stating that a resolution is divisive. This community has been divided for over 75-plus years. Believe it or not, communities have been divided on this land since its founding, since it was founded on the genocide of natives and the backs of black people. Agendize a ceasefire resolution.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Zach, followed by Noble and Wright Ronberg.
Hello. Thank you all for the time today. My name is Zach. I'm a new San Mateo resident in District 5 and also a Jew. My grandmother fled the Holocaust, or right before it, in the late 1930s, from Germany. She was born in Berlin in 1930. And for her, her exposure to Nazi ethno-nationalism made her a lifelong anti-Zionist. So this is where, one of the main places I dropped my investment in this issue from. I want to emphasize that a ceasefire and advocating for justice cannot be anti-Semitic because none of us are free until all of us are free. And this is a specifically important time for a ceasefire resolution from San Mateo, as Mullen has yet, to my latest knowledge, signed his name onto, I'm forgetting what it's called, but a petition for more money in the House. And he is going to be a key vote there. This is going to be a key issue internationally and locally to avoid the alienation of our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Noble, followed by Rangit and Tammy Michael.
My name is Noble Mushtaq. I live in San Mateo District 3, and I'm here to urge the City Council to agendize and pass a ceasefire resolution. What is happening in Gaza is an unthinkable, unconscionable, undeniable genocide being funded by our federal tax dollars. In the face of this brutality and apathy to human life by our federal government and our own federal electeds in California, you as local electeds have the duty to give voice to the people and call for ceasefire to end this brutal US-funded genocide. This is a local issue because as a Muslim, every week I meet more Palestinians, Arabs, Muslims, residents who live in San Mateo, who have friends, family members, and loved ones who have very lost, who are there grieving, and who they have completely lost contact to. I am deeply disappointed that City Council members have refused to take a stance due to divisiveness. Every issue can be hinted as divisive, but it is cowardly to refuse to take a stance when our government is funding senseless killing of the loved ones of our own community. When our own community is in deep grief, you must do the bare minimum, stand up to our federal electeds, and call for a ceasefire now.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Rangit, followed by Tammy Michael and Rami Asaya.
Good evening. My name is Rangit Ronberg. I've been a District 3 San Mateo resident for 10 years. I'm here to respectfully request that you agendize a resolution calling for an enduring ceasefire in Gaza, free flow of humanitarian aid, and the release of hostages on both sides. Please, I urge you to stand on the side of peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Tammy Michael, followed by Rami Asaya and Mohammed Bakir.
Hello and good evening, everybody. I was here a couple of weeks ago, and I wasn't sure. I put my name down. I'm like, am I going to talk? Am I not going to talk? Honestly, I'm really disappointed, and I'm losing faith in everybody here. And I'm usually a positive person. But I emailed you, Rob Newsom. I never heard back. I'm a paying tax person. My family, my aunt is in Gaza. My uncle, I brought his picture. He was killed by Israel. This is him. He wasn't bombed. This is him. He's diabetic, and because Israel cut off all medicine, he didn't have medicine. His wife, my dad's sister, my aunt, is still living. She's sheltering in the church. And today is the Greek Orthodox First Day of Lent for the Greek Orthodox.
Thank you.
This is my aunt.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Rami Asaya, followed by Mohammed Akir and Mr. Makmohr.
Good evening. In these last five months, a genocide has been unfolding in Palestine
In these last five months, a genocide has been unfolding in Palestine at the hands of the Israeli army. The fascist Israeli government cares not for Ramadan nor those observing it. Last week, I saw a video of an Israeli soldier boasting about what he's destroyed as he fed the remains of a Palestinian to his dog. Atrocities like this have been the norm, not the outlier. We have been forced to watch our children, parents, and loved ones killed off in the most horrific of ways. The ones alive are dying of starvation and attempt to skirt death by eating grass to break their fast in Ramadan. Going forward, to remain silent and ignore the famine and genocide is nothing short of cowardice. People's literal lives are at stake, and yet we put our heads in the sand out of fear that people will feel uncomfortable. We can be better than this. We must be better than this. Please stand for humanity and the preservation of life. Please agendize and pass a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Mohammed Bakir, followed by Mr. Makmohor and Elaine Ruda.
Salaam alaikum. Be with peace with you. It's time for you for ceasefire. You have to have a lot of courage. You carry responsibility. What's going on in Gaza? A lot of people die every day. We vote for you. Take action. I'm going to give you a nice song for Palestine, at least to wake up your conscience.
Thank you.
Long live Palestine.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Mr. Makmohor, followed by Elaine Ruda and Zach Kleiman.
Ladies, gentlemen, good evening. I am so appreciated for your time. I am appreciated for dear mayor sit up this meeting. And I have especially, very especially thank you from Police Department for our security for life. I was here first people I sit here. That time was four minutes, but almost two hours I waiting. Now is one minute. My felt very bad. I don't want talk. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Because everybody was, I was four minutes. Then one minute I should say hi, bye. It's gone. I don't want talk about my life. I want talk about everybody life. I am dentist. I know. Time is over. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Elaine Ruda, followed by Zach Kleiman.
Hi. My name is Elaine, and I live in District Five. I'm here to ask you to agendize a resolution for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza. Last night, Israel raided Al-Shifa, one of the largest medical centers in Gaza, detaining journalists and killing 20 people, including an individual who worked for the UNWRA to bring aid in northern Gaza. While Israel continues to have utter disregard for any international laws and commit genocide, our president continues to bypass Congress to send our tax dollars to fund a murder of 31,000 Palestinians in the last five months, but half of which are children. And beyond livid and disgrace, our money is siphoned to fund a murder of innocent lives. Are you also not angry and disturbed in how we as Americans are contributing to these atrocities? Or do you think because this is a city council that you have no role to play in national and international politics? I am a resident here, and I vote for you, and I'm pleading you to please call for a ceasefire. Your government officials in the buck of political responsibility has to stop with you. Own it. If you are fretting over elections, I hope you also fret over and lose sleep over the 31,000 lives lost. If you wonder about logistics and processes and what city councils can and cannot do, I'll tell you that at least 50 other US cities have called for a ceasefire.
Thank you.
Please call for a ceasefire.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Zach Kleiman. Oh, thank you. Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment.
So there are no online comments? No.
No requests to speak through Zoom.
All right. Then I will close public comment, and we'll move on to a public hearing. Public hearing will be the 2024 Solid Waste Collection Rates Increase. Jack Johnson, the Waste Management Supervisor, and Rick Simonson and Gabe Sasser of HFG Consultants will be presenting.
Hi. My name is Jack Johnson. I'm the Waste Management Supervisor for the City of San Mateo. Tonight, the request of council is to conduct this 218 protest hearing to determine if a majority protest exists, to approve the 2024 solid waste collection rates included in the 218 notice, and approve the appropriation of $1 million to ecology to reduce the city's balancing account. A little bit about the annual rate review process. Rates are reviewed by the council every year and, once adopted, are effective for the next year. The city follows the California Constitution when setting solid waste rates. Currently, residential rates do not cover their cost of service, and there are 20,721 residential accounts in San Mateo. Commercial rates do generally cover their costs, and there are approximately 2,674 commercial accounts in the city. And before we discuss the 2024 rates or the protest letters, I want to remind everyone about the solid waste process and what services the rates actually cover. Other than illegal dumping, most of the work of the solid waste team is managing waste diversion, keeping things out of the landfill, and recycling valuable resources such as paper, glass, metal, cardboard, and organics. And let's consider for a moment what actually happens on garbage pickup day after the typical resident has put their bins out to be taken away. Three trucks, one each for garbage, recycling, and organics, picking up from each service location, and then going to a series of places, some of them far away. Garbage to Ox Mountain in Half Moon Bay, recycling to locations all over the region, and organics to Newby Island near Milpitas and Blossom Valley in Vernalis. This is expensive. So while there is no extra charge on your ecology bill for recycling and organics collection and processing, these services aren't free. They are very important. Nor does our garbage bill include all of the city's efforts to keep San Mateo clean and reduce waste. Our anti-litter programs, the trash capture maintenance costs of preventing trash going into the bay, all of the city's street sweeping and the public outreach and education we do, our e-waste collection and shredding events, hazardous materials collection, construction and demolition, recycling, and illegal dumping. None of that is called out on our garbage bill. So remember, what we refer to as the solid waste rate or the garbage bill actually includes many more services. Some background on how we got here. We have received a good bit of public comment that the proposed rate increases are designed to punish those who produce the least amount of waste. The fact is that city has long been and remains committed to waste reduction. But regrettably, because of state laws, we are no longer able to fund our waste recycling and composting programs in the way we had been. So we have to make up for that. How did we get here? In 2006, in order to promote recycling and reduce waste going to the landfill, San Mateo, like many progressive communities, adopted a pay-as-you-throw system. But in the intervening years, California didn't meet its landfill reduction targets established by law. So in 2016 and 2022, new regulations from the state came into effect mandating recycling and composting. Neither is voluntary for anyone in the state any longer. And because the California Constitution through Prop 218 requires rates to be proportional to the cost of the service to the parcel, we can no longer use the pay-as-you-throw model and must transition to a true cost-of-service model. And unfortunately, the 20 and 32-gallon cart sizes are the ones that must transition over the next several years the most because they are the sizes that have received the largest subsidy since 2006. I'm going to turn this over to Rick Simonson and Gabe Sasser from HF&amp;H Engineers, our consultants for solid waste rate setting. They will walk us through the proposed rates.
Good evening. I'm Gabe Sasser, project manager with HF&amp;H Consultants. We were asked by the city to evaluate the current rates, and the first step in doing so was establishing the 2024 revenue requirement, which is composed of three parts. The ecology collection costs, which are increasing 9% from 2023 to 2024. And that's attributable to high inflationary increases, which are allowed as part of the city's franchise agreement with ecology. The second component are the disposal and processing costs, which are increasing 25%. And that is due to a new operator agreement with South Bayside Industries, which SBWMA reached agreement with through a competitive procurement process. And SBI took over site operations in January of this year. And finally, the city fees, which include the solid waste program funding, street sweeping funding, franchise fee, and other solid waste-related fees. And those have decreased more than $933,000 from 2023, and we'll get into why. Let's go to the next slide, please. The city was facing more than a $3.8 million shortfall based on revenues at current rates and 2024 cost projections. However, they worked to reduce costs in three manners. One, a one-year deferral of ecology increases through the cap carry forward deferral. This allows for increases exceeding the 5% threshold of ecology's costs to be deferred for one year. The second component was the 2024 temporary reduction in tipping fees by utilizing the rate stabilization funds from the SBWMA, which the city, as a member of the SBWMA, benefits from. And this reduction will go away in 2025, but provides a temporary relief. And third is the reduction in the city expenses, which were made possible by reducing street sweeping funding as well as a temporary pause on the collection of the landfill closure fee because the city currently has sufficient reserves to meet its obligation. Let's go to the next slide, please. So the city is currently facing a $1.7 million shortfall despite those savings. However, reserves are not directly responsible for incurring that shortfall as ecology maintains a balancing account payable to or from the city at the expiration of the franchise agreement, which happens to be in 2035. The way it works is that when ecology collects revenue on an annual basis and that revenue exceeds the approved cost of service, then the balancing account increases. And conversely, when the revenue is less than the approved cost of service, the balancing account decreases. Interest is charged to the city if the cumulative balance goes negative. And as you'll see on the next slide, the city is currently carrying a negative balance. That deficit of $1 million can be factored into the $1.7 million shortfall for 2024. So what we are recommending in the path forward is through rate adjustments, which is why we're here tonight. Let's move to the next slide, please. So the Proposition 218 Notice, following the January 16th council meeting, included increases the commercial customers as follows. A $2.85 per month increase to the 20-gallon commercial and multifamily customer solid waste rates that you see in the left-hand table, and removal of the commercial organics rates discount, which previously was 25%. This discount was originally in place to incentivize commercial organics subscription. However, with the passage of SB 1383, that incentive is no longer necessary. Therefore, moving forward, commercial organics rates would be the same as the same level of container size for a solid waste container for those commercial multifamily customers. Let's go to the next slide. The other component is adjusting the single-family residential rates, which was also included in the notice. This table for comparison shows how the city has been working over time to realign its rates to the cost of service. However, difference at all levels of service still exist. And let's move on to the next slide. The proposed solution, which was included in the Proposition 218 Notice, includes a $5 a month increase to all current residential subscribers, regardless of size. The proposed plan adjusts rates in 2024, but really seeks a long-term solution so that by 2028, projected revenues would meet projected expenses. And the path to doing so involves the use of solid waste funds during that timeframe. Let's move to the next slide. The way that the city can achieve this is because they, or the reason the city can achieve this is because the solid waste fund has $6.2 million in reserves as of last fiscal year end. And the city can make plans to use up to $1 million in reserves in this calendar year to reduce that historical balancing account deficit previously touched upon. And in addition, the city could use up to $3 million in future years to reduce future rate increases as well as to pay down the balancing account deficit. It's recommended, at the same time, the city keep a prudent level of reserves to fund such assets, including the replacement of the current street sweepers, as well as to maintain six months of solid waste expenses for cash flow purposes. Let's move to the next slide. So again, this is why we're recommending this $5 per month increase and why this was included as part of the Proposition 218 Notice. And these rates would also use solid waste reserves to reduce increases to ratepayers so that ratepayers are not bearing the cost of these large increases on their own. It would align rates closer to the cost of service. It would allow the city to generate revenues to meet expenses over a longer-term period. And it would also help reduce the balancing account deficit. Let's move to the next slide. The city, as a member of SBWMA, is not alone in facing these costs. And so the next four slides, including this one, include a comparison of all member agencies' residential cart rates for 20-gallon, 32-gallon, 64-gallon, and 96-gallon customers. And with the exception of Belmont and San Carlos, who did not have updated rates at the time this was put together, all other member agencies have looked at increasing their rates. And despite those increases, San Mateo rates remain some of the lowest. For example, the 20-gallon customers. And then if we show on the next slide the 32-gallon customers, the position remains unchanged. And then if we move to the 64-gallon customers, again, in the lower quartile of all other agencies. And finally, for the 96-gallon customers. So this increase also shows that San Mateo customers still pay less than half of all other SBWMA member agencies for the same level of service. And with that said, I'll pass it back over to Jack.
So to reiterate, rates must cover the cost of solid waste services, including garbage, recycling, and compost collection and disposal and city fees. And while in prior years, rates were structured progressively pay-as-you-throw, we can no longer do that per California law. And the rate structure proposed moves the city closer to accurately charging the cost of service for each customer base. Additional increases will be needed in the future. San Mateo rates are below average of comparable jurisdictions in our JPA. The summary of the 2024 rate proposal. The rate increases as proposed in the Proposition 218 Notice were to increase commercial solid waste 20-gallon cart rate by $2.85 a month and to remove the 25% commercial organics discount for all commercial containers for organics, and to increase all residential rates by $5 a month, and also for council to remit $1 million from reserves to ecology to reduce the balancing account deficit. Our rate adoption timeline, we met in January 16th to get council approval to mail the public notice. We met on February 2nd to, oh, I'm sorry. On February 2nd, the 45-day public notice mailing deadline began. That has concluded. And today, we are having the city council public hearing to hear protests. And on April 1st, if rates become affected, rates would become affected if adopted tonight. The request of council, again, is to conduct the protest hearing to determine if a majority protest exists and to approve the appropriation of $1 million to ecology. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Councilmember Lorraine? No. Councilmember Hedges has his hand up. Councilmember Hedges.
Yeah, the, we've actually looked at this for some time. I don't really have a lot of questions. One thing that concerned me that didn't realize, we're cutting back on street sweeping. I need some information on that.
So we can follow up on on that uh concern that you have. I'm not aware of cutting back on street sweeping at this time, but I'll go ahead and uh follow up with staff after this meeting.
It was in the report. And uh obviously, being in one of the areas of the city that everything runs downhill too. It's concerning to me that we might not be cleaning the streets as much as we were. Thank you.
Councilmember Lee, do you have any comments, questions? Councilmember Lee, yeah. Okay, Deputy Mayor Newsom, and neither do I, so um. At, I guess we call for public comment.
Yes, if you wish to speak on this item and have not done so, please deliver a yellow speaker slip to me. Um if you are attending via the virtual environment, please raise your hand now. I will give you a few moments to do that. Madam Mayor, we have a total of three public comment requests.
Okay, so that would be three minutes apiece.
Three minutes. So we will call the next three speakers. Uh our first speaker will be Mr. Mahmoud, followed by Diane Whitaker and Marty Dewey. Mr. Mahmoud. May have left the room. We'll move on to our next speaker, Diane Whitaker, followed by Marty Dewey.
Good evening, councilmembers. Diane Whitaker. As has been mentioned, everyone received their large postcard earlier this year. And having read the notice and analyzed the proposed rate increases, I ask the following question. How are the proposed rate increases fair and equitable? For my calculation, if this is approved, it would represent a monthly rate increase for residential garbage collection. And as we've heard, that includes the recycling and the compost bins. Would be a 21% increase for a 20 gallon cart. A 15% increase for a 32 gallon cart. A 9% increase for the 64 gallon cart. And a 6% increase for the largest, the 96 gallon cart. Why not increase rates with one uniform percentage increase across the board? Would that not be a more fair and equitable method to increase rates? As proposed, the new rates place a disproportionate burden on households that are already doing their part to reduce garbage by selecting the 20 or the 32 gallon carts. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Marty Dewey. Looks like Marty is not in the room, thus concluding public comment.
All right, then we will close public comment. Um Deputy Clerk, were there any additional public protests received?
Madam Mayor, we did not receive any additional public protests.
Okay. Since we have determined there are no more public protests coming in, I am now closing the public hearing. Deputy Clerk, have you determined whether a majority protest exists?
We have tallied all of the written protests to the proposed increase in solid waste recycling and organic collection for the 2024 rate year. And there were 31,687 notices mailed to property owners on the tax roll and a majority would require one more than half that number. The number of valid protests received is 22 as of March 18, 2024. Based on that, it is clear that a majority of owners have not protested the fee increase and the council is free to take action to increase or otherwise modify the fee.
Thank you. Uh then I would like to call for the motion to adopt a resolution to establish maximum rates for solid waste recycling and organics collection for rate year 2024 and adopt a resolution authorizing the finance director to appropriate $1 million from the solid waste fund unassigned fund balance and remit to recology to reduce the city's balancing account deficit by September 30th, 2024. Do I have a motion?
I'll move that.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
Thank you. Could you please take the roll?
Councilmember Hedges.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
I'll I'll say a little bit before before I vote. Um I I actually want to, you know, I wanted to assuage any concerns. My my read of this process is that we are contemplating, you know, a very tough decision to increase rates. Um but doing so with the expectation that we're maintaining um existing quality service as well. Um so I I think Councilmember Hedges respectfully, perhaps that was misunderstanding because I don't see anywhere in the stop report that there was a reduction in street sweeping. And if that were the case, and I think that we would need to address that, but that's um I I I don't see that. Um or that's not my interpretation of of.
It's not in the resolution and I didn't see it in the report either, but and confirmed with our public works director, that's not, we're not reducing.
Great.
Street sweeping service in the city.
I think it's helpful just to make sure that we're all clear about what we're voting on and that this is not a reduction of any service quality. Um and, you know, and I've been on council now five years, many of which were during the pandemic and we used this enterprise fund um very judiciously to not increase rates for two straight years to help community members and rate payers. And now we are looking at how we can ensure that this enterprise fund remains solvent. And we're digging into our healthy reserves to help smooth out costs increases for rate payers and that that costs um that cost savings goes directly to community. And as somebody who cares a lot about recycling and composting, um I asked every possible way. Is, can we structure some kind of subsidy to maintain the pay as you go or pay as you throw model? Um and, you know, Jack Johnson can attest that I asked. And unfortunately, you know, sometimes we had to play by the rules that we don't like. And that's, these are rules coming directly from the state. And so I really appreciated the um the way that you helped make that very explicitly clear in this presentation. We are um we are operating within the rules and the guidelines that we have. And this decision we don't take lightly. And um and so, you know, I I hope to join my council in supporting this increase um and telegraphing to community that we do so very thoughtfully. Um and in a well-considered way that I I believe will actually in the long term bring bring back savings to our rate payers. And my vote is yes.
Councilmember Lorraine.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Diaz Nash.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Nash, I have my hand up.
Yes. Councilmember Hedges.
I also did not see it in the staff report. I heard a statement. I don't know whether it's a reduction in the in the street sweeping, but a reduction uh reduction that was a spoke spoken report in in funding for street sweeping and I'll work that out with the city manager later. I'm not against the resolution because of that.
Okay. Thank you. And Rick, I guess all hands are down. Okay, well that.
I would like to request a bio break if possible after this item.
I think that's a great idea. All right, so since we have finished this, why don't we take a five-minute break and then we'll move on to the general plan amendment.
All right, so I think we're ready to begin. All right, thank you, everyone, for that short break, and we are going to move on to item number 15, the general plan amendment to adopt STRIVE San Mateo General Plan 2040. And the presentation will be led by Zach Riddall, our interim community development director, assisted by Joanna Jansen, principal of Placeworks. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Zach Doll, interim community development director, and I'm joined here this evening by Joanna Jansen, principal with Placeworks, the lead consultant for the city's general plan update. So for tonight's agenda, this is our second public hearing before the city council to consider adoption of General Plan 2040. We'll start with a presentation, move to clarifying questions, receive public comment, and then have council discussion, and ultimately, actually not direction, tonight it will be action. As always, we want to acknowledge the team behind the general plan update effort, which includes city staff, both within community development and public works, as well as throughout the entire city, and then our consultant team, which is led by Placeworks. So for tonight's objectives, we'll receive an overview of the final environmental impact report, as well as the Climate Action Plan technical update and General Plan 2040. Following discussion, we do have resolutions to certify the final environmental impact report with a statement of overriding considerations, and a resolution to adopt the Climate Action Plan technical update and STRIVE San Mateo General Plan 2040. So to provide a project overview, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Joanna.
Thank you very much, Zach. As has been said, I'm Joanna Jansen, a principal with Placeworks. Very pleased to be with you tonight. Want to give you a quick overview of how we got where we are today. This slide gives everybody just a brief reminder of some of our major general plan milestones, starting back in 2018 with the establishment of a citywide vision, taking us through the selection of a preferred land use and circulation scenario, draft general plan, and third row from the bottom, the general plan adoption, which is where we are tonight. All of these milestones were accomplished based on significant engagement with the San Mateo community at every step in the process, at over 80 events, including in-person workshops, staff presentations at community organizations, pop-up events, as well as online activities, newsletters, and of course, meetings of our very hard-working general plan subcommittee, planning commission, and city council. So with that, let me say a little bit about what's in General Plan 2040, the culmination of all of that input and engagement. The general plan includes the elements that you see here on this screen, guiding the physical development and conservation of the city and its environment. Throughout the entire general plan, we paid special attention to three key themes of sustainability, environmental justice, and community engagement that we heard were of critical importance to the city council, as well as to the San Mateo community. One important piece of the general plan, I want to make sure everyone is aware of, is the General Plan 2040 land use map. The designations on this map identify where different land uses are allowed, and what is allowed, and what parts of the city, and on individual properties. So this is the map that sets the density, intensity, and height maximums of the city, very important for regulating how San Mateo will look, feel, and change over the next 20 years. That land use map is based on the building blocks of the 10 study areas that you see shown on this map. These were established based on council, community input, and council direction earlier in the process, and are really the areas that we feel are both most likely to change and best able to accommodate change, particularly because they're located close to transit, jobs, and services. The general plan update process also included a technical update to the Climate Action Plan, to make sure that these two important documents remain in alignment. The Climate Action Plan is the city's comprehensive strategy to reduce greenhouse gas, or GHG, emissions. It was most recently comprehensively updated in 2020. And so that it may continue to serve as a sequoque-qualified GHG reduction strategy, we took the opportunity to ensure that the numbers and projections and assumptions that underlie the general plan update are carried forward into the Climate Action Plan. That enables it to remain relevant for city actions, as well as to be applied to private development projects, and ensure that they are consistent with the Climate Action Plan after the general plan is adopted. As required by state law, we also prepared an environmental impact report, or EIR, on the general plan and the technical update of the Climate Action Plan. We evaluated all of the different environmental topics that you see here on this screen. For the majority of these topics, everything with an asterix, we concluded that the impacts would be less than significant, because the combination of the general plan policies, as well as other state and federal and other regulations, avoid or lessen the impact to a less-than-significant level. For the topics of air quality, noise, wildfire, and the cumulative impacts for each one of those three categories, we did find significant and unavoidable impacts that could not be mitigated to a less-than-significant level. Because the EIR found those significant and unavoidable impacts, we have to consider whether there might be overriding considerations that would outweigh the potential environmental impacts from the adoption of the general plan. So tonight, you're also asked to have, make the statement of overriding considerations that identifies how the project's benefits outweigh its potential impact. So some of the very important things that the updated general plan will do include supporting local businesses and services, providing the city with a legally adequate general plan that meets all of the requirements of state law, supporting multimodal transportation, emphasizing safety and access, directing city investments to equity-priority communities, protecting open spaces and natural habitats, prioritizing the developments of a climate change adaptation plan, and establishing clear actions to protect the community from flooding, wildfires, and other disasters. Given that, the general plan EIR also lays the groundwork for individual projects to mitigate potential impacts to a less-than-significant level. So we do believe that both the benefits of the general plan, as well as additional protections and analysis that can happen as individual projects come forward, will significantly reduce or avoid environmental impacts from the general plan in the future. With that, I want to hand it off to Zach to say a little bit more about a related effort of the housing element.
Thank you, Joanna. So we also wanted to touch on our housing element, which is part of the general plan, but is on a parallel but separate path for adoption because of state law requirements and the fact that it functions on an eight-year cycle, as opposed to the general plan, which is a 20-year plan. Earlier this evening on your consent calendar, we did provide our first annual progress support for the housing element, and it was a little bit unique in that we are reporting on a housing element that has not yet been final, the updated version of which has not been adopted by council, or fully certified by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. So we will be coming forward in April to Planning Commission, and May to City Council to present our updated housing element and present it for adoption. And then we'll be submitting it to the state for formal certification. But this past January, we did receive a finding from the state that our housing element in its most recent form is substantially compliant with state law. I did want to highlight a couple of pieces from our first year of implementing our housing element. Even though we have been focusing our efforts on gaining certification, we have also been moving forward with implementation. And I think two notable achievements there are adoption of objective design standards for multifamily and mixed-use housing projects, and then a code amendment to increase the administrative threshold from 5 to 25 units. And per council direction, we'll be coming back at some point later this year to maybe explore even raising that threshold even further. We did also want to acknowledge some of the housing projects that were approved and finished. And in particular, we wanted to highlight our strong ADU production, which exceeded our targets in the housing element for year one. We were shooting to have a production target of at least 55 permits issued, and ultimately we ended up issuing 83 permits, which is aligned with prior year trends that show strong ADU demand and strong production. So we are optimistic that we'll continue to see strong numbers into the future. So moving back to the general plan, which is before you this evening, wanted to touch on the discussion direction provided at our first public hearing on March 4. As part of that recommendation, council did support the four recommendations that were provided by the Planning Commission, related to removal of the story definition, clarifying that the density range in the land use element sets a ceiling but not a floor. And then there were two specific land use map changes, one over Bayshore Corporate Common Site off of Amphlet, and then the other one was a grouping of office projects or properties recognizing an existing use over on Burrell Avenue. There was also council support for some recommended land use map cleanups. We do want to acknowledge that before council can take formal action on those, we will bring those back to Planning Commission for a recommendation, as any amendment to the general plan or its land use map does require a Planning Commission recommendation before council can take action. And so that would also apply to the San Mateo Marriott site, which council did provide direction to prepare additional information and bring that back for further discussion this evening. So with that site, we did have Attachment 10 in your agenda packet, which provided additional information on kind of the background and context for this site. It is designated, or currently shown on the map, as regional commercial. This is aligned with the 2030 general plan, because up until recently, this was a site that was seen as relatively stable and anticipated, a use that was anticipated to continue. But with the closure, that has opened up opportunities on the site, and appears likely that there will be some degree of change moving forward. So as part of your consideration for this evening, we wanted to highlight some potential alternative land use designations if council's interested in changing the designation, which is currently sitting at regional commercial. You could look at a mixed-use medium 1, which would allow for a similar intensity as regional commercial and align with the designation on the Bayshore Corporate Common Site to the north. You could also look at a designation that increases the density up to 99 units an acre, which would functionally double the potential housing capacity on the site if you went with a mixed-use medium 2. Or you could look at a mixed-use high, which would allow for up to 1,300 units potentially. And keep in mind, this is a base density, so state density bonus could allow for additional units to be produced on top of this base density. And if there is a change recommended by council, we would need to take that back to Planning Commission. And then we would imagine, if you do want to see a change to the land use map, we could pair this with the housing element, which goes to Planning Commission in April, and then you could consider a formal change to the land use map when you're looking at the housing element in May. We also did want to highlight a specific characteristic under the current general plan and Measure Y, which this grouping of sites, it's the office buildings on the corner at Concar, and then this site, are identified as having the ability to have an increased base density. Citywide, Measure Y sets a 50-unit-an-acre density limit. On this particular site, it can achieve a base density of up to 75 units per acre if it provides for additional amenities beyond those required by city standards, as well as includes a high-quality design of the building, and then creates a balanced design that respects its surroundings with regard to height, and ensuring that there is adequate infrastructure to serve the site. And so really highlighting that, we wanted to bring attention to the fact that even if there is a development that moves forward before a final designation is selected, or if, while Measure Y is still in effect, there is still an opportunity for a project to start with a higher base density, which in practical terms means that a housing project would be providing more affordable units as part of any proposal, because there is that higher base density potential. And so this, there's also two recommended changes to hotel lodging-related policies. And what we did was recognizing that the loss of the Marriott hotel use at this site does impact the city's budget, as our transient occupancy, or TOT, tax revenue, there was a major piece of that that came from this site. And so we saw this as an opportunity to specifically recognize this revenue source, both within kind of the use case for hotels, so we wanted to recognize that's a key component of when we approve a hotel use. It provides a revenue source in addition to serving the community and providing that diverse economy. And then also in our land use element under revenue generators, recognizing the role that the TOT plays in ensuring that we have a strong and robust fiscal outlook for the city. We also want to recognize all of the written public comments that have come in. This is since final general plan publication, we have received 29 written public comments, and I think this was from earlier this afternoon, and I believe we got another four or five later, so this number is higher. And we have been forwarding those and posting those to STRIVE as quickly as they come in, to ensure that everyone is able to see those, and that is able to factor into the decision that you make tonight. And so you can see, they cover a range of topics. We've gotten multiple comments on the amount and intensity of new development allowed, concerns particularly in the more recent letters about the historic preservation policies, and the lack of a specific reference to contributors in the definition. We've also received some concerns about the historic preservation and the other way, that it could actually hinder development of additional housing. way that it could actually hinder development of additional housing. We've heard comments about the street classification, in particular on Fifth and Ninth, comments about reinstituting the High Two land use designation, and various other ones, some of which have already been acknowledged or accounted for in prior council direction related to the story definition, specific property requests for land use designation changes, and then other comments relating to downtown, use of office space, and making sure that we're managing for and planning for flooding and sea level rise. So in terms of where we are right now, what we're looking at is adoption or certification of the Environmental Impact Report, and adoption of the Climate Action Plan technical update, and the city's general plan 2040. Following this action this evening, we would be looking at bringing the housing element back to the council in May, and any additional land use map cleanups that come out of tonight's meeting. And then we will also be moving forward with exploring a Measure Y ballot initiative and looking at that language to stay on track to potentially place it on the November 2024 ballot. And then that would bring us to the fall, where then if that ballot initiative is placed, voters would have an opportunity to weigh in. And then following that effort, we would be starting our comprehensive zoning code update to implement the general plan beginning of '25. So the recommendation before you this evening is to adopt a resolution to certify the final environmental impact report, and adopt a resolution adopting Strive San Mateo general plan 2040. And that does conclude staff's presentation, and we are available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much to both of you and everybody who is virtually behind you who put this together. This has been quite the journey, and we just happen to be the people here at this moment. So let me open it up to questions. Let me start with Councilmember Hedges. Do you have any questions at this time?
I'm going to reserve questions for now and may have some. We've been doing this for so long. I just want to say thank you to Zach and everyone that's been working on this. It's been quite a journey, and it's been very long. Thank you.
Okay, then Councilmember Lorraine. No questions?
No questions at this time, thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Lee?
I have some questions. Okay, so I wanted to return to the Marriott site. And if you don't mind bringing up that slide, and we can all look at it together. So, you know, I raised this at the last council meeting, and I really appreciate the deeper dive that staff did to show some of the potential alternatives, and then also contextualize the current designation under Measure Y. And so I wanted to just make sure that we're all clear about working with the same information, that currently there is potential for the site to go up to 75 units per acre with community benefits, right? Correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. And so I think that that's important, an important consideration when we're thinking about potentially rezoning. State law prohibits us downzoning, right? So if the current, if the current potential capacity is 75 units per acre, then, you know, it is, we are required then to consider upzone, we're required to at least match that level of zoning. And I think, you know, furthermore, I just wanted to, I wanted to further explore the, you know, the current designation under Y. You know, we've talked a lot about community benefits and the potential of community benefits coming to San Mateo with increased height and density. And so under the current, under the current and existing Measure Y policy, which has been in place for 30 years now, has the city of San Mateo ever seen a residential project that actually triggered this, you know, pierced the 75 units per acre with community benefits? In our 30 years, has that ever happened?
Not under the Measure Y provisions, no. It's the hotel use that's there, and there's been some office uses that have exercised it, but not a residential project that we're aware of.
Okay. So I think, you know, when we, we are policymakers, right? We are tasked with the job of setting policy. And so when we set a community benefit policy that has literally never been used in 30 years, that to me is a clear indication that we have not been doing our job, that this policy has failed. It has failed to deliver on essential community benefits that could, that could actually bring tremendous resources and assets to our community. And so I raised that because, you know, in this conversation about wanting to, wanting to look at how this site can play a key part in our future, in the future of San Mateo, with, you know, with the closure of the Marriott, I wanted to, you know, I wanted to surface these two questions. One, has community benefits ever been triggered? The answer is no. And two, are we, are we allowed to downzone in, under the current law, state law? And the answer is also no. So those are my questions on that. And then I guess my other question, you know, Councilmember Hedges had raised a, had raised the issue of Burrell Square. And I thought that, at the time, I wasn't, I wasn't completely tracking with what that, what the implications were. And so I'm glad you brought it up. But I think it's actually worth digging into a little bit. So, and Councilmember Hedges, if you want to jump in and clarify what your questions were at any time, that would be great. But, but my understanding was, the original question from Councilmember Hedges was, under current, under the current designation, does that little finger that's outside of the 0.5-mile radius boundary, does that little finger that is currently designated Office High allow for and support residential development?
It does. Right now, we do identify a density that can be achieved there, which would be up to 130 units an acre. And as a commitment in our housing element, within the next year, we will be allowing housing as a permitted, we're bringing forward a code amendment to allow housing as a permitted use within office designations.
Great. And, and so I think it's interesting to look at this site comprehensively. And it strikes me that there's Office High and Mixed Use High sandwiching Office Medium. And, and I think that that might deserve some conversation. You know, this is, this is one of those things where we're like, you know, we're here, we might as well get it right, because we're doing this, right? It's 9:30, it's only 9:30. So Councilmember Hedges, do you want to jump in?
Before, Councilmember-
With permission from the mayor, I will.
I'm sorry, before, through the mayor, if I can interject.
Just one second, Rich. Hold on one second.
Very briefly, just on the downzoning issue. I mean, so I wouldn't characterize it as a flat-out prohibition. There are restrictions on downzoning under state law where the city cannot reduce the residential capacity of a site unless it makes other adjustments to other areas of the city. So I just wanted to clarify that, that point, that, in other words, the city can't change, say, the general plan or the zoning ordinance to look at an individual site and individually reduce that site's residential development capacity unless the city changes other standards to ensure there's no net loss in residential capacity. So there's a bit of a caveat, but I understand what you're driving at.
And I understand, and I appreciate that distinction for state law. But we also have a city policy that specifically prohibited downzoning, that we, no?
I'm not specifically aware of one. Would it be in this general plan or is it-
No, it was in the housing element. Remember the site, it's Gustavo and then Jessica's site at Motion Arts Center, that this issue came up, where they were concerned about, about potentially getting downzoned. And we specifically codified in the housing element a rule that, and a guideline that we would not downzone. That's, that's what I got in the bank. So anyways, but thank you for the clarification. We'll put it out there. Councilmember Hedges, did you want to weigh in on this?
Yeah, actually, I'm a little ashamed of myself that I didn't pick up on Burrell earlier. It's an amazing location for transit. Actually, I think you could, because of the frequency of the Samtrans bus in El Camino, actually move beyond the half mile from Cal train, because it stops right there at that location, on 15-minute headways, at least at peak time. So, but, you know, there's so many businesses there that actually aren't shared in other parts of the city. There's even a cutlery store, there's hair care, there's banks, there's credit unions, there's grocery, there's just on and on, all of the things that you need for a transitory development. So it makes perfect sense. And one of the failings that I see with the, with the state mandates on housing is that we have a 50-unit-per-acre in most parts of the city that allow for, for higher development. And that's all we can get when we're figuring our below-market rate. If we had 130 units per acre on all of these sites right now, let's take the Fish Market site, we'd get another 11 units of below-market rate housing at the Fish Market. So we're, we're hand-strapped at these locations for 50 units per acre when we're getting far more units. So I think raising this for housing, as well as the higher densities, would serve us well to get more units for our people that work so hard here but can't afford to live here. Thank you.
So can I, so I guess I'll just follow up with a question. I mean, curious to hear from staff what your recommendation would be in terms of, you know, treating, treating this, you know, Burrell Square as, you know, as one large cohesive opportunity, right? And, and, you know, from a, from a planning perspective, you know, does it really make sense to have, you know, have Office Medium smushed in between Mixed Use High and Office High? And what, you know, what would be sort of the, the, you know, from your professional standpoint, what, you know, what, what would you say would be the most cohesive recommendation?
Looking at this site and looking at the designations as they currently exist, putting, moving the Office Medium to an Office High would make sense. It would be consistent with recognizing the existing office buildings that are there, and then provide that opportunity for housing either as an additional add-on, because there are significant surface lots on both of those, or if there was a redevelopment and a transition of the site, it would support a housing, housing production as well. And then you do have a mixed-use potential environment over at the shopping center. And so I think you do get that synergy of proximity to transit, but also jobs and services as well. But I think ultimately, there's, there's different mixed-use designations that could go there. But staff's recommendation would be for an Office High there to recognize how it's currently developed.
Thank you. That's very helpful. Through the mayor, would you like Councilmember Hedges to weigh in on this specific item? Because it sounds like he has a question related to-
Sure. Councilmember Hedges.
I agree with Councilmember Lee that there's no reason to leave that as Office Medium, especially if we made it the ability to be Office High or Mixed Use High. Actually, I'd prefer Mixed Use High. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Do you have any other questions?
Yes, I just had one minor question. For land use policy number 3.5, we, it was, and I'm sorry I didn't screenshot it, but basically, the idea was, was to encourage businesses serving neighborhoods. And, and I guess I, it struck me that I wanted to specify, do we consider nonprofits also businesses? And if not, then is that something that should be explicitly added? Because I do consider many nonprofits to be, you know, to be, to be essential in delivering, you know, community assets and community resources, community services that can benefit neighborhoods.
Which was the policy reference? Was it a land use element 3.5?
Yes.
I'll have to look at that one for just a second, because I do know that we have different policies that speak to nonprofits, and there's different functions, but depending on how it's intent.
Okay.
And this is supporting service uses, encourage, encourage businesses that provide a variety of services, such as restaurants, childcare facilities, medical clinics, gyms, pharmacies, hardware stores, and grocery stores in locations that serve residential neighborhoods and commercial office uses. Prioritize the development of these service, services and equity priority communities in the city.
Right. And so, you know, specifically thinking about equity priority community areas, an area that I live in, right, in North Central, if we are not already specifically defining nonprofits to be a business, then I would ask that the council consider, or I would ask, well, first of all, let me ask, are we, do we consider nonprofits businesses?
It, I guess it depends. Some might have a business function, but I mean, generally, no, they kind of fall into a different category. When you look at where this policy is placed, it is under the, the goal of supporting a diverse range of land uses. So a nonprofit isn't necessarily a land use category. It fits probably most, most likely under the quasi-public designation. But if you wanted to include a reference to those that have a business operation, I don't know that that would necessarily conflict with the overarching intent of the policy. But it's really, I think, supporting the notion that we, we have a wide range of land uses that support kind of that full and diverse economy.
Okay. I'm, that's helpful. Those are my questions.
Okay, thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you to your whole team for a great presentation. A few questions. Are we, are we assuming that the loss of the Marriott makes it a far-gone conclusion that we will not have another hotel in that space? Because, you know, I've been looking at, it's only a few blocks from my house. I've been driving by it a lot lately, and I keep looking at it. And what occurs to me is, is if you look at like the New Hampton Hotel that was built in Los Prados, we could put a hotel on that's significantly higher and that has a two-level or parking structure, and then still get a significant amount of parking lot converted to housing. So do we have to decide tonight what we're doing with this? Or is this something that we can adapt or adopt later? Because it's a living document. And honestly, I don't even know that we, you know, we're there yet, right? We don't, we don't really know entirely where, what's going to happen of this, other than we know the intent is to sell the hotel. But does that necessarily mean that the hotel is going to be demolished and not replaced with another hotel?
No, absolutely. I mean, I think what we know is we don't know the future of the site at this point. And I think part of why we recommended strengthening two policies related to hotel uses is recognizing the importance of it. And so I think any proposed development, we would want to look at, is there an opportunity to bring, have a hotel use as a component of whatever goes in there, both because it meets a community need, it provides an important revenue service, and it could be part of a mixed-use development there. So, no, reestablishing a hotel use is definitely something that's feasible, and we would want to support for what was just outlined.
So if we were to split, I don't know why this term exists, but split the baby, meaning we're going to put a bigger hotel there and housing, do we have to zone it differently? And if so, what does that look like?
So to look at a mixed-use project like that, the most appropriate land use designation would be a, one of those mixed-use designations. But within that regional commercial designation, that is also a district that within the next year will allow housing as a permitted use. So in theory, you could have regional commercial uses, which includes a hotel, and housing uses, and that would support both of them. So you could envision a project that includes both of those pieces under that current designation.
Okay. I was talking to another city person outside of our city, and what she suggested, and I wasn't sure if we'd done anything like this, is that could the city put a statement out of what our design- could the city put a statement out of what our desire is to have the lot look like going forward? Meaning, we desire it to be a higher-rise hotel with parking and, you know, X amount of units of, of 75 units or higher density housing units. Is that, is that something that we can do to try to communicate to future developers and buyers, like signal what we'd like to have there?
I'll kind of look to our city attorney to weigh in on...
Well, I think you're, you're signaling your interest, you, the council, are signaling your interest in what kind of uses you want on the site through adoption of the general plan, through adoption of the land use map in the general plan showing the, what, which in turn indicates what kinds of uses are allowed on the site. And this conversation, you know, is also, I think, can be of some guidance to future developers on the site. And to answer one of your earlier questions in terms of, does the council lean to make a decision tonight? No. No, you don't. I mean, you can simply adopt what's in front of you and the land use map can be changed at a later time. You know, there's, depending on the, the type of change, or I should say, a change to something other than what's proposed tonight, would need to go back to the planning commission for recommendation under state law before it comes to the city council. But there's no final decision that'll happen tonight for, for that site. Because again, it's a, it's a living document, as you indicate.
Right. Okay. Great information. Thank you. To follow up on Councilmember Lee's Burrell question, and Rich Hedges actually alluded to this too. If we look at the map, if we go from the El Camino Real, which is definitely a transit corridor in and of itself because of the frequency of the ECR bus lines, does that, where does that put the, the line of housing? I mean, obviously the perimeter gets bigger, but if the entire site that was, was moved from house, from office to housing, do, as long as some of the site is within the perimeter, does it, does it count as transit corridor? Or does the entire build area have to be within that perimeter?
I think it's important to understand, like, what would be the reason for the transit corridor designation? Is it for parking relief? Is it to be part of transit? So I think part of it would be, I think, I'm assuming your question's related to AB 2097 and parking relief. As long as a portion of the site is within that half-mile radius of transit, the site does qualify for potential to have that reduced parking provision. The El Camino Real, based on our current interpretation, because it does not have two routes that, because the Caltrain stations clearly meet it. So you've got your half-mile radius around each of those. Along El Camino Real, you do have one route that provides those 15-minute headways, but we don't, you need that second route. And wherever you have two routes that intersect at a stop, then you get a new radius. We have a couple of those stops over down by the Hillsdale Station, but we don't have any stops in this area. So for just that purpose, it would, the radius wouldn't get bigger. But that's not to say that you don't, you have, it's, it's clearly our, one of our richer transit corridors. And so this whole area is definitely within the half-mile radius of that El Camino Real corridor.
So does that mean that we would basically need an east-west intersect? Because, or we'd need a second line running on the El Camino Real? Like, we're only saying we have one, only one route that runs the El Camino Real as opposed to two?
Yeah, that, per the AB 2097 definition, you do need that second route. So maybe it, it's running a different direction where it shares El Camino. And so there's a few stops where they both, if you have any stops where two lines that have those 15-minute headways both utilized, then that creates a stop that you create a half-mile radius around.
Got it. And the Samtrans school bus lines would not qualify because they do run right adjacent to that.
I would have to look into it. Based on what we are looking at and in consultation with our, our transportation team in Public Works, we didn't flag that as meeting the criteria. And I know we were engaging with Samtrans staff as part of our determination.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for all the clarification. I'm going to go back to something and I just don't want to beat a dead horse, but I am going to ask a little bit more about contributors. So I've had a couple of emails this past week concerned about the historic district of downtown San Mateo. I've got answers that suffice from the city manager already, but I did just want to, you know, ask up questions and get on record. So currently, the 2030 general plan has the word contributors in it, the 2040 does not. If you look at downtown, there's 57 historic buildings, 28 of which are only, only contributors. If by removing the word contributors, we are not losing the protection of the 28 contributors, right?
That is correct, yes. The definition includes historic districts. And historic districts are made up of contributors. That, that's a key component of what makes a district a historic resource. And so by referencing the term district, we are including a district and its contributors if there's historic resources. That all makes up that district, which is the historic resource. And so we, we do, we've talked to two different historic consultants who have looked at the definition and have not identified any reduction in protection for contributors downtown based on the definition that's in the general plan 2040. I do also want to highlight that we, that our historic preservation ordinance very explicitly protects the contributors within the downtown district. And, and so that, that obviously is going to remain. And so what's proposed does not change how we would look at the downtown district or in the contributors that make it up as well.
Yeah. I mean, I, I, there's a lot of beautiful old buildings in downtown San Mateo. And what I don't want to see is all of a sudden, like, well, these 27 are now fair game to be, be taken down. And I'm assuming that that would carry over to Glazened Wood as well, as far as contributor status?
Yes. For the purposes of this definition, which identifies designated historic districts, that would include the downtown district, Glazened Wood, or any subsequent designated historic district. Because that, a district, unlike an individual resource, which is a property and a structure or set of structures, a district has a lot of pieces. And a big part of what makes it historic is the contributor component. And so when you reference a district as being a historic resource, it includes its associated contributors.
Okay. Thank you for all your answers. Appreciate it.
Yes, Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. The discussion to date has prompted me to just try and ask a clarifying question along the lines of what Deputy Mayor Newsom was asking earlier related to the Marriott site. I just want to ask, Zach, is it fair to say that a mixed-use land use designation at medium, two, or high on that site, one that allows for flexibility to, you know, include something like what I feel the Deputy Mayor was mentioning, i.e. like a hotel with some housing? And, you know, but not necessarily preclude it from being something very much like what we have there today? Maybe I'll start there.
So I think it's important to note, the mixed-use designation really is the most open in terms of allowing for flexibility of use. It doesn't require a mixed-use project. You could have a hotel, you could have an office building, you could have multifamily, you could have a project that has some or all three of those or other uses. It's really, it's open-ended, as we want to envision flexibility and then you can get more focused with the zoning when that time comes. So if that's your question, yes, the mixed-use designation provides the most flexibility and would allow for housing and/or a hotel use, depending on how they were proposed.
Thank you.
Okay. Can you put back the slide with the Marriott, please? Great.
Is that the one you were looking for?
That's it. That's it. Okay, great. So my question, I think I'm hearing a lot of consensus in, among the council that we all want TOT revenue. I mean, this is a very important part of our, our city. And right now, without this property, there's a hole in our TOT revenue that we're going to have to figure out what to do about. We also want housing. And that would be a potentially very interesting combination. And we, but we also want to provide flexibility for anyone who wants to develop there. The one thing that we're not talking about is what about the traffic impact? And that's what I would love to ask you. Because if I recall correctly, South Ample there, it, it's a dead end at one end and it comes on out. And if you had a hotel, you know, like your model with the higher-rise hotel and you had the housing, what does that mean in terms of circulation?
So obviously, we don't know the specifics, but we do know this area, there's, there's circulation challenges here. And, and this would probably be the biggest issue that any project on this site would have to address. It would start with the transportation impact analysis. And we need to look at these streets, where they feed in. I mean, in one sense, you do have direct connectivity to Highway 92, but you have limited points in and out. So you're really looking at Concar, you're looking at the intersection with Delaware. Obviously, the 19th corridor has, has circulation challenges as well. So yes, this would definitely be a piece that would really require some analysis and would probably be the most challenging component to account for and design for as part of any project that moves forward here.
So you're hearing us all say, we want TOT, we want housing, we want the flexibility that if, you know, the, what might come up. But we already have so many traffic issues there. What would be, what would be the way forward or the zoning designation to be able to not give us the flexibility, but also recognize that if it, my concern with the mixed use, I understand that it is flexible. But if we've got a real problem with traffic there already, are we just digging ourselves into a hole?
Well, the land use designation is a piece. And the, every designation has its ceiling. A project still has to be designed to work on the site that it's proposed on. And so not every project is going to be able to hit its ceiling. Because you still have to get through your environmental review and make sure that all of the associated pieces work and you're not creating any significant unavoidable impacts that can't be mitigated. And so I don't know that we would need to worry regardless of the designation, because ultimately, when we have a project, we're going to need to do that site-specific analysis. And that's going to drive what intensity could be feasible here, or if it needs to go higher, what those trade-offs would be. So I guess we don't need to necessarily have that answer right now. And you can also look at where council wants to go with this site in terms of intensity, density, and those other pieces.
Okay. Well, right now, I think that, those are my questions. So shall we open it up to public comment? Sure, absolutely.
So I've been at this for seven years now and learned a couple of things along the way. I just wanted to ask a clarifying question. My, my understanding is that commercial designations actually typically have higher trip counts and are more of traffic generators than residential projects. So, you know, I, I know that there's a lot that goes into, you know, considering any one project and all the, you know, all of the mitigations that will be required for each site. But overall, is that not the case that commercial is actually more of a traffic generator and trip count generator than residential?
At, at a basic level, yes. But I think obviously there's nuance, the type of commercial use that's going in there. You have different kind of peak trip generation points, depending on if it's office or commercial or residential. So yeah, there's, there's a lot of different pieces that go into a kind of a final outcome. But yes, if you're looking at per square foot, per thousand square feet, a commercial use will typically generate more traffic than, say, a multifamily or a housing use.
So you could, I mean, you could theoretically make the case that maintaining the existing commercial zoning actually could potentially reap, you know, more traffic than changing the use. So I'm just speaking aloud here. But that's, you know, some of my, my learning along the way, seven years into it.
All right. Well, then I think we are ready for public comment.
Yes, Madam Mayor, if you wish to speak on this item, and if you haven't done so already, please deliver a yellow speaker slip to me. If you are attending remotely, please raise your hand. We'll give you a few moments to do so, and then we'll tally up the number of speakers we have and announce the last speaker. All right, Madam Mayor, we have a total of nine speakers and the last speaker will be Lisa Van de Vorder. Apologies, we got one more, just came up. Our last speaker will be Tasso Zagrafus.
Okay, so that's 10, so that's three minutes apiece.
Yes, that's correct. We'll begin with the speakers in council chambers. If I call your name, please line up to the right of me. Our first speaker will be Lori Watanuki, followed by David Light and Rick Bunia.
Mayor Diaz, Mayor Diaz Nash, and city council members. My name is Lori Watanuki. The 2040 general plan EIR has reclassified Fifth Avenue, which is a local street, and Ninth Avenue, which was a collector. And these have been reclassified to minor arterials. This new classification will bring 3,000 to 14,000 ADTs to three streets surrounding the Yoshiko Yamanouchi House, which are Fourth Avenue, Fifth Avenue, and South Humboldt. This will bring more traffic to the new historic resources on all three sides of the site. And this new classification of major collectors, minor arterials, are not recognized in the current neighborhood traffic management plan, which is called the NTMP, for traffic calming devices to reduce cut-through traffic on these streets. The 24 general plan recommendation to upgrade Fifth and Ninth is flawed since more traffic will be pushed through a street if it has been reclassified to a major collector or a minor arterial. There is insufficient evidence supporting this reclassification today to minor arterials for either of these streets. Street classifications is a long process. The minor arterials, major collectors, and emergency routes need to be added to the current NTMP. And a faster methodology needs to be developed, reduce cut-through traffic. And that plan is not identified or analyzed in the current 2040 general plan. There's a lack of analysis in the general plan to explain these street classifications and what the process is and how the Yoshiko Yamanouchi District would be protected from future traffic. Reclassification of Fifth and Ninth will happen and a new, and 19 new development projects are proposed in this downtown. They're in various stages. There's also six-grade separations that are being proposed between First and Ninth Avenue. So therefore, the traffic calming should be installed today on Fifth and Ninth Avenue along with South Humboldt. Now, I just wanted to also comment on community benefits. When the Marriott Hotel was given this increase in height, the mayor at that time, Sue Lempert, negotiated with the Marriott and they got about $100,000 to, to, to upgrade their park and they got $1 million for the 19th Avenue Park Association. So I want to make it very clear that community benefits do exist and they have been applied to neighborhoods. Also, the Heinz project gave community benefits of lights to the Concar area when they had an extension of time on the development plan.
Thank you, Lori.
Please keep that in mind.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be David Light, followed by Rick Bunia and Ken Abreu.
Good evening, Mayor Diaz Nash and members of the San Mateo City Council. My name is David Light. The Yoshiko Yamanouchi House historic resource is now on both the National and the California registers. It has nine contributors. It is important to add contributors to the historic districts back into the general plan definition of historic resources. The environmental impact report fails to identify, analyze, and mitigate significant impacts to the Yamanouchi House historic district from the general plan's increased, increases in traffic noise, vibration, and particulate emissions. These traffic impacts have in traffic noise, vibration, and particulate emissions. These traffic impacts have affected and will continue to significantly impact the three physical structures and the three gardens on this historic site. The city did not consider or analyze the feasibility of mitigating traffic impacts by designating R2 housing instead of the more impactful service commercial light manufacturing in the adjacent area to the Yamanouchi House. The city should consider the following additional mitigation measures to reduce the effects to this historic district. Construct a sound wall with thick plantings along South Humboldt, where the turn lane has been extended by the city of San Mateo. Install traffic circles and speed humps on Fifth and Ninth Avenues between South Delaware and Amphlet, and on South Humboldt, to reduce the current and future cut-through traffic surrounding the Yamanouchi Historic Resource, and install five-ton load limit signs to limit the size of trucks making deliveries to South Amphlet and cutting through our neighborhood. Reroute construction traffic west of the railroad to use El Camino Real, or Interstate 92, or Interstate 101, to reduce increased dust, particulates, noise, vibrations to the equity priority neighborhoods and the Yamanouchi Historic Resource. And finally, designation of R2, or another non-truck land use, to the adjacent area to the, along South Amphlet from Fifth Avenue to Folkstone, to reduce the impacts of diesel particulates, truck noise, current tree damage, and surrounding this historic site. And I just want to point out that housing is already being planned for the Fish Market and Concord Passage, which is adjacent to Highway 92, and the 1650 to 1750 South Amphlet, which is along Highway 101. So I recommend not approving the Environmental Impact Report until there's mitigation for this Yamanouchi Historic Resource. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Rick Bonilla, followed by Ken Abreu and Diane Whitaker.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and all of you staff. Rick Bonilla, I've been looking at this thing since probably six years ago, and thinking about it, and devoted a lot of thought. So I'm happy to be here tonight. I do recommend approval of the Environmental Impact Report in going forward with some form of this plan after we consider the recommendations that I'm about to make. First, bring back the High Two designation. I don't know what happened to it, but it's going to hurt us. We have a housing element which was somehow termed, what is it, substantially compliant. I'm not sure how that happened, because we didn't make many changes, or any changes practically. And suddenly, HCD decided we qualified for that pronouncement. So I think that we need to be aware of the fact that when we're able to build higher, we're able to leave more open space and create more walkable, open, airy, sunlit areas around buildings, where people can walk, they can bike, we can have nice, manageable streets. We'll have room to do those things if we allow taller and denser developments, or, you know, more, more higher office spaces where those are called for. That said, I have a list of some other things I'd like to talk about. We do need to fix the community benefit policy. It's been broken for quite a while. It should be something that actually incentivizes and attracts developers, rather than shooing them away, which is what happened to Essex at Fifth Avenue and San Mateo Drive some time back. They did not like that policy, and that would be required for them to get an extra couple of floors. Didn't work for them. We haven't seen anything since. We haven't seen anything there on Fourth Avenue in that area that allows up to 75 feet. Nothing. It's been talked for years, but nothing. All along Bovee Road, the section marked as "office medium" should be marked as "mixed use high." And the area, and I'll tell you why, okay? The area along Borel Road should all be shown as "mixed use high." Both Bovee and Borel are between two to five blocks from McCall train stop and the El Camino Real bus stops. Let's make that station viable and provide better mixed uses, so that we have more people using the train there, and including the possibility that much-needed housing and open spaces for all could be there. Finally, Bay Shore Commons and Marriott sites should be mixed use high, with a hotel, if possible, because I recognize we do need the TOT. But when you say something is mixed use, that doesn't mean it's got to be either this or that, as Zach just explained. We can mix those uses as we see fit, depending on our needs at the time, and depending on what applications we receive. That's the big wild card variable you must remember. Just because we designate something doesn't mean that's what we get in terms of applications. And land uses can be changed, as the city attorney referred to. So let's keep all that in mind. This might be a general plan.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. My time is up. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Ken Abreu, followed by Diane Whitaker and Robert Whitehair.
Thank you. And after six years, it's kind of nice to be here on this day. But I think that the plan that we've come up with is a whole lot better than what we have today. But it's still lacking a little bit. And with all that time and all that effort, we want to make sure we don't miss. We don't miss the opportunity to address the housing, that we don't miss the opportunity to get the open space and parks, and really make this general plan in this city world-class, something people can look at from all around the Bay Area, and all around the region and the world, and say, hey, that's the way to do it. The one key thing is that High Two, the designation. I think that being able to, in some specific areas, being able to go to that higher density, being able to go to higher height, where that height is linked to be able to provide open space that can be used for, you know, bike lanes, parks, riparian corridors, and stuff like that, is a big plus. And again, the example in the Sierra Club letters we've sent all the time has been to that example in the Reimagined Hillsdale, which, it's just an example, but it gives you a very good example of if you're stuck with the current plan, you know, the Measure Y limits, and then some in between, and then a High Two, here's all the things you can do. And it's a, it's a plan that shows that the residential people on Edison have a much better compatible residential area across from them, and you have much better amenities for everybody in the city in terms of open space, parks, sidewalks, and bike access, and so forth. So it'd be the one thing, I think, and we've pounded on it pretty hard in our Sierra Club letters, that we would see as an improvement. And so as you go forward with this, I think you've got to keep that open. When the opportunity comes up for some project, let's look at maximizing the benefits and making it world-class. Let's not settle for some, you know, sort of, okay, but not everything we can do. And the last thing I'd just say is, y'all have worked really hard. Other city councils have worked really hard. The staff, I know, has worked really hard and done a good, real good job on making this come together. So let's, let's make it a really a top-notch plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Diane Whitaker, followed by Robert Whitehair and Lori Heater.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. Diane Whitaker. Per the California Register of Historical Resources and the National Register of Historic Places, historic districts are defined as a composition and/or a collection of eligible, potentially eligible contributors and non-contributors structures. The California State Office of Historic Preservation and the National Historic Preservation Act both recognize contributors as important components of a historic district. Staff has opined on more than one occasion that contributors do not need to be included or referenced in General Plan Chapter 5, Policy CD 5.3, because contributors are in the glossary section. The definition of a glossary is, and I'm quoting, "a collection of textual glosses or of terms limited to a special area of knowledge or usage." That's from the Webster's New Collegiate Dictionary. No one reads a glossary. It is generally used as a reference when a term in the main body of the document is not clear to the reader. To be consistent with state and federal documents, please revise proposed Chapter 5, Community Design and Historic Resources element of the Strive San Mateo General Plan 2040, to include the word "contributors" and "non-contributors" to Policy CD 5.3. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Robert Whitehair, followed by Lori Heater and Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Deputy Mayor Newsom. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. I want to congratulate staff and the council for six long, good, hard years of work on the General Plan. I, like a lot of the other people in this room, were there when we started this, sat through a lot of the really important meetings that you've all have held, and I appreciate and congratulate you on that. I'm speaking here tonight and now as the Vice President of Borel Neighborhood Association, and we support the mixed use high designation, the change in the General Plan. The reason we do this, for the flexibility. We, I live four blocks from that property, and we see that all the time. We see two huge empty parking lots, and we see the Borel Center. And we've had some indirect contact with some of the owners of the property. Some of the buildings there probably could be turned over pretty easily. A couple of stuccle buildings, only two stories high, they're near my house. It's time to think bold, think about something we could do better with that property. Mixed use high, flexibility is absolutely the right word. It's an opportunity. It's an opportunity for the owners as they turn over the properties and pass it on down to their next generation. We support it because we think it's something that the neighborhood could benefit from. And I'll throw out the word rec center. San Mateo could really use a very big rec center, like Burlingame has, like San Bruno has, like Millbury has, like a lot of the other cities. That would be an opportunity to have a combined use there of housing, rec center, and some other things. I know it's a, it's a big thing to ask. I know it's a lot of hard work. But the Borel Neighborhood Association is really in favor of doing the hard work that it's going to take to do something like that. So thank you for your time, and thank you for all of you done.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Lori Heater, followed by Jordan Grimes and Connie Weiss.
Good evening, Mayor Nash and the council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I'm Lori Heater, and I have been an environmental consultant for over 40 years now, conducting NEPA and SEQA analyses, and I'm proud to say that none of our documents were ever challenged or required to be recirculated based on an error that we made. I'd like to start with two questions. One, if contributors are no big deal, why were they taken out? And number two, why is there so much resistance to including them in the definitions? I'd love to have an answer to that. I was going to talk about something else, but given that there is misinformation, I don't know which consultants Mr. Doll spoke with, but the state Historic Preservation Officer, Office told me specifically that the historic district is the historic resource. It's not the contributors, and contributors are not protected as historic resources. It's the district. And what that means is, if you have an historic district of 28 properties, you can pick off contributor by contributor. Yes, you have to do a SEQA analysis, but the city would likely make the finding that losing one out of 28 contributors would not have a significant adverse effect on what makes the downtown historic district historic. I've tried to explain this many times. It's a complicated issue. I can also send you this in the state and federal documentation that clearly states the historic district is the resource, not the contributor. So I respectfully disagree with Mr. Doll's conclusion. So please take that. I'd appreciate it if you could put contributors back in to the definition, since it's no big deal. I agree with the statement that we need more community benefits. All these huge projects that stress our infrastructure, they should be giving back. Most cities do that. And I'd like to end with, you know, you've got a general plan that half the city feels will really deteriorate our quality of life. You've got an EIR that is significantly flawed and should be recirculated. This council is the steward of our community, and we hope that you won't be the council that is responsible for the deterioration of our downtown historic district. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Jordan Grimes, followed by Connie Weiss and Lisa Van de Vord.
Good evening, staff and council, Jordan Grimes, lifelong San Mateo resident. In the 1940s, San Mateo approved a new apartment project on West Third known as Ryan Tower. It stands 11 stories tall. Should the GPU move forward as written, 100 years later, the highest one could build is eight. A century will have passed, and our land use intensities will somehow have regressed, which is why, after spending six years and countless hours of my life in these meetings, I feel such profound disappointment with the document that we're discussing tonight. Policies should be crafted with two things in mind: effectiveness and what we have, and what will have the greatest positive impact for those most in need. The High Two designation meets all of these criteria. It will produce significantly more housing, which we need, and will benefit those most in need. And we know, based on community surveying, that 59% of likely voters who, I would once again remind the council, are disproportionately whiter and more affluent than the city average, support up to 10 stories in the General Plan. A General Plan update that only includes High One is woefully insufficient to meet the needs of both current and future residents. Critically, it also stands a significant chance of failing at the ballot box. Already, groups like San Matanz for Responsive Government are mobilizing against the GPU, and at the same time, housing advocates, including myself, view the plan with extreme ambivalence. It is safe to say that after more than half a decade of advocacy, and in spite of polling showing strong community support for much higher heights and densities than are included, to see only minuscule increases in extremely limited areas in the city has left many of us wondering why we participated at all. Four years ago, when the council unanimously opposed Measure Y, pro-housing advocates mobilized to help. We knocked on doors, made calls, sent texts, mailed postcards, thousands of them, leading to one of the closest elections in San Mateo history. But the enthusiasm this time around is nonexistent. If council wants residents to support the GPU, we need all of you to do more. Reinstitute High Two and give people a strong, effective plan to rally around. Give us a plan that ensures we have a future here, that ensures that your children have a future here. Give us a plan that moves us forward, not one that keeps us stuck in the past. We'll go to bat for, we will fight with you for, a plan that truly addresses community need. If it doesn't, and that is currently the case, we won't. And some of us might even oppose it along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Connie Weiss, followed by Lisa Van de Vord.
Good evening, Mayor Diaz Nash, Deputy Mayor Newsom, and city council. As discussed this evening, the General Plan 2040, our current governing policy document, does include the word "contributors" in reference to historic districts. "Contributors" is not just a dispensable word, like an adjective or conjunction. It has meaning in the context of historic resources and historic districts. Why not put it back into the General Plan 2040, so that there is no ambiguity in interpretation or application? Staff said previously, this is a local policy choice, and they are looking for council direction on how this historic, how this historic resource definition is crafted. This is the time to give staff the direction they need prior to approving the General Plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our last speaker in chambers will be Lisa Van de Vord.
Good evening, city council. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Lisa Van de Vord. I am here tonight to ask you to not approve the adoption of General Plan 2040 until the word "contributors" is inserted back into the historic resources definition. Without contributors, our entire downtown historic district is at, is at risk. Imagine downtown as a quilt made up of listed properties, eligible to be listed Imagine downtown as a quilt made up of listed properties, eligibility to be listed properties on the National Register, and contributors. Contributors in the downtown historic district represent over half, that would be 28, of the 57 properties in the district. Contributors are the fabric that make the historic district. Without them, you have no quilt and no historic district. This is because state and federal regulations define the district as the historic resource. As a prior speaker stated, you can then pick off the contributors one by one and still have an historic resource. So with all due respect to staff, that is why it is so important to include the word contributors in the historic, historic resources definition of the general plan. Furthermore, removing the word contributors reduces the protection of historical resources, and this impact has not been adequately analyzed in the EIR. This makes it deficient under SEQA because it does not analyze the change in historic resource protection. This omission violates SEQA and opens the city to litigation. Critical questions include: why was that word contributors important then in General Plan 2030? Why is it not important now? What has changed? Why not put it back into General Plan 2040 so that there is zero ambiguity? Including contributors in the general plan mitigates all these concerns, and I respectfully ask that you do so tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And as was announced earlier, our last speaker in this item will be Tasso Zagraffos. Tasso, please unmute your mic.
Good evening, Tasso Zagraffos. As others have already asked and stated, the term contributor should be put back in the housing element for the historic districts. There's, there's really been no good reason for removing it, as others have said, which only leads to increasing a level of distrust as to why it might have been removed and what were the motives for doing so. And so I ask that the term contributor be placed back into the document. And then my other point here is about the housing element itself. I feel, just as a resident and others that I have spoken to, that the creation of the housing element has lost its way. It's become a vehicle to try to undo Measure Y, which the voters put in place. I might add, Measure R was resoundly defeated, which was a confusing contributing factor to why Measure Y was such a close race. And I think a 3D model of visualization of what San Mateo would look like if the buildings or structures were put in place to the extent of what this housing element would allow, would shock residents, and they would oppose this housing element, and it would go down in defeat. So I think it warrants putting together a 3D model. I think the residents deserve to see what they would be voting for or against. If they could see what the build-out and the amount of development would be, usually, I think it would help to really educate them. I know a lot of outreach has been done, paid outreach, but I think it hasn't really resonated with residents. I don't think many of them really understand what's in the housing element and what the impact would be, let alone the impact to our infrastructure and our traffic and other elements of the city. So with that, I would, I'm opposed to this housing element, and I would fight to reject it as is. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that concludes public comment.
All right, then we will bring it back, close public comment, and bring it back for comments and any additional questions by council. Councilmember Hedges, do you want to start for us?
I'm satisfied generally with the general plan. There might be some minor things that would change. I don't think it's important to bring up now, except for the things I've already brought up. One of the things, though, that I am concerned about, and I agree with the Central Neighborhood Association, is very perplexed when Ninth and Fifth were made a minor arterial. And speaking with planning, my understanding is that we can, we have to abide by it because the state has put it in their documents. Zach can talk about that when I get finished, but I would like to really pressure the state to change that. So I just don't think it makes any sense. It's a minor arterial to nowhere. as far as adding contributors, I'm not interested in doing that. And so I will leave it to that now. So I may have something later.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Lorraine.
Thank you, through the mayor. I appreciate the, the members of the public who are still with us tonight, and for those who gave public comment. I, I do think, though, that most of the comments we heard tonight were on topics that I feel the council has deliberated over with staff already and over multiple meetings. And I feel that the conclusion council has come to date on those topics with staff recommendation, as evidenced in the, the final general plan as we have it now, are satisfactory to me. So I don't think I'll dwell too much on those. But we do have at least one question, I feel, before the council tonight that's new, and I think each council member should try to weigh in on the, the best land use designation for the Marriott site. And I would propose that we opt for mixed-use high at that site because of many of the reasons that came up during the discussion tonight. For me, the, the key is, is flexibility. As, as the mayor actually said, you know, we need transit, transient occupancy tax as a revenue source, and we need, we need housing. And so a mixed-use high designation offers the flexibility for either of these things. It, it might even offer the potential for both. I think to the mayor's point about traffic congestion and issues there, and, and councilmember Lee brought this up as well, I, and I would, you know, defer to what Zach mentioned in, in the discussion, which is that any project will have to go through the environmental impact report process, the SEQA process, and, and, you know, that would include needing to meet various standards with traffic analyses, whether it's a mixed-use high or mixed-use medium. So in that case, why not offer the flexibility of a higher ceiling without necessarily requiring any developer to meet that ceiling? And as Zach also noted, if we were to have something that, you know, the, the developer needs to bring forth a, a project that ends up working from a traffic analysis basis. But let, I would say, let's give the, the developers the flexibility to pursue the best possible project in that, in that space, again, without requiring that maximum, right? So if, if someone were to come out and say, you know, we'd like a project that's very much like the current San Mateo Marriott, that would be a welcome addition to our city, and that wouldn't necessarily reach those maximums, and that would be okay. Developer could come and say, I would like a, something very much like what is currently being proposed by the developer at the Bay Shore Commons, which is more closer to mixed-use medium one. That would also be a good addition to our city. And that would be possible with, with a mixed-use high designation. So I, I think it just leaves all options on the table. And I think especially given that we are making a compromise more broadly with the general plan land use designations by agreeing to try and meet in the middle with a High One designation as opposed to a High Two designation. One of the trade-offs for that was we, we, we left some housing potential off, off the table. So this is, this is a new development, as it were, and, and I, I think this can maybe even help bridge some of that gap without transforming the, the compromised vision that this plan offers. With regard to Burrell, I guess I'll, I'll, I'll jump in and say, I, I could see changing that piece that's Office Medium to Office High, as was suggested by staff. I think that provides, again, kind of a balance in that it seems to reflect what we have on the site today, which is Office. But our Office High definition has, has been tweaked along the way through this process, such that the, you know, the, the maximum height and density of such a project is, is reduced from a mixed-use high, for example. And so that, plus the possibility of allowing for housing on that site, as was discussed, I, I think allows for a good mix. And it, you know, as was shown in the picture, we do have a number of high uses all around it. So I, I think I would be comfortable with that. I would also be comfortable with leaving it alone. I, I think those are the, the main, my main thoughts on, on, I think, new developments that have been brought forth, particularly since March 4th. But I'll also just take one brief moment to, to really just say it's, it's a privilege to be here tonight. This is, this is, in some respects, the, the culmination of just thousands of hours of work from, from, you know, hundreds of, of folks, you know, scores of staff and consultants, city employees, council members, planning commissioners, but also a, a large number of members of the public who have been coming to meeting after meeting, you know, community organizations, so many who have contributed to, to this plan over years. It's, it's been, it's been a distinct honor to, to be at the first general plan subcommittee meeting in 2018, and to be here tonight with you here in City Hall. I, I do think we've come a long way. I think we've been able to gather a ton of input from the residents of San Mateo to help envision a future that will allow both those who currently live here to still enjoy what they love about this city, and also allow for more housing opportunities for those who may work here but currently can't afford to live here, people such as myself who grew up here but now find themselves renting based on economic pressures and the price of housing today. I, I believe that overall this, this plan is, is worth adopting. I'm going to support adopting it tonight, and, and I hope that those who participated in the process felt like they got an opportunity to, to shape it a bit with their voice. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Lee.
I actually do want to start with a question. One of the, one of the policies that, that we've been talking about for some time now has been creating a minimum density requirement for, for mixed-use designations. And I, I guess I, I, I want to make sure that if this is the opportunity to further refine or clarify that policy, that we do so, or, or better understand what is the process that we're going to undertake to, to, you know, to, to flesh it out. And, and I say that because I think that there's, 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 I think, some, you know, understandable confusion in terms of what, what the different designations mean and what their housing opportunity actually entails. So for commercial designations, we actually are, you know, we are allowing housing, right? But we're not requiring it. Whereas mixed-use, we've been talking, you know, at length about how do we ensure that in this mixed-use designation, which is the vast majority of rezoning that's occurring through this process, that we actually do get housing there? And so I want to service that question because I think it's really important to get very explicit about, about the, the, you know, differentiating these two, you know, these two definitions and their housing potential, and then where we are and where we're going in terms of refining that policy.
So yes, I can try to provide some, some clarification or additional information to, to answer your question there. Last year, council did provide direction to staff, and it's, it's part of a program within the housing element to bring back options for council consideration on how we might look at setting minimum densities for a mixed-use project. Right now, we're looking more at a project type and not necessarily limiting it to a land use designation. It's open, so ultimately, council will have the opportunity to weigh in, and you might want to set a parameter like that. But the goal is really to look at, is there an opportunity? Is there economic feasibility to set requirements like that? So we are moving forward. We are working with a consultant right now, looking at a number of questions, including this minimum density question and how we might set policy around it. And then we will be, be bringing back options to council later this year. But I do want to highlight at this point, we're not looking at just designated, mixed-use designations. We're looking at if a mixed-use project is proposed, and I think primarily if it, that mixed-use project is utilizing state density bonus law, do we want to set, say, minimum density or a minimum percentage of the project or different options like that in, but also not make sure, making sure we're not going to economically preclude or make it infeasible for a project to meet that requirement. So that's kind of what we're looking at right now, and, and those are options we'll be bringing back to council later this year for your input on how to proceed. And I'm sorry, one other thing. We do have a policy within the general plan that speaks to sites within close proximity to Caltrain stations as requiring minimum densities there. And so we'll include that policy as part of the discussion we bring back to council. But that's the only policy within the general plan that speaks to setting a minimum density.
And that would be a minimum density per, per project also with the same, the same distinction that you're, you're describing?
You could look at it different ways. You could say it has to be a minimum percentage of whatever building type is proposed. You could say maybe if, you need to be 80% of whatever your base density is. So you could set that requirement in different ways depending on, and, and we'd also want to look at the economic or fiscal implications of such a policy.
Right. Sure. Okay. So I mean, I think, I think that I'm comfortable, I think I'm comfortable, I think I'm pretty comfortable with, with the, with that clarification that, that at this point, the framing is around setting a policy that would apply to projects and wouldn't beholden us to, to, to a, you know, to some sort of framework that would, that would be only, you know, applied unilaterally or uniformly across every single designation, right? So I like, I, I appreciate that approach, and I, I would like to hear from the council. Are we, you know, are we in agreement that that is, that that's the expectation? Because we've all been weighing in on, on this, this as a priority, wanting to actually get housing in our mixed-use.
I'm comfortable with how Director Doll has described I'm comfortable with how Director Dahl has described it.
Thank you. Yes, nodding heads, okay. Noted. Okay, I'm happy. It's getting late, and I was up.
Can you see my head nodding?
Yes, I see your head nodding. Okay, this is what happens when you've been up since 4:00 AM. Okay, so I will say this. Just run down the line. For Burrell, I would, I'm open to either mixed-use high or commercial high. I feel a little bit agnostic. I mean, my inclination is to heed the, is to listen to the community members in the surrounding area who are supporting mixed-use high, but I could be convinced to go with a commercial high. I absolutely support the Marriott to be re-designated as mixed-use high. And we solve for the minimum density.
So my relief, office high for Burrell? You were saying commercial high.
Oh, yes, sorry. I meant office high.
Okay.
Yes, not commercial. Office high or mixed-use high. I'm flexible. Let's see, what else? I feel like, you know, I don't know if it's been six years or seven years. I'm losing track. I thought it was seven years that we've been in this. I look across to Joanna, and I'm like, we have been in the trenches together very early And I do think that we've come a long way here, and there's a lot of very positive community engagement. We've sharpened our skills and reached out to many, many underrepresented community members through a very concerted effort by the staff. I think that we've had a lot of hard and courageous conversations. We've serviced a lot of new information that I don't think was really explicit in terms of our understanding, our own community, and who we are and what our needs are. I think that that effort to define ourselves and our needs is a really important and challenging process to go through. And I would like to say that I think this plan sets us up for future success. But frankly, I feel like it still is falling very short. And the area that it falls short for me is the most important and highest priority for our community, which is affordable housing. And where I see alignment from two very different and opposing sides from our community is the strong desire to bring forth community benefits. And I think that there should be still a conversation and a moment for us to consider right now, coupling community benefits strategically with high-two. And I see, or I see a way forward that would help us get support from both sides and bring us into focus about what we really care about. We care about bringing childcare online to working families. We care about open space and creating new parks and bringing rec centers to San Mateo and aquatic facilities and road repairs. Those are the things that are chronically underfunded, that we have to continually go out and ask taxpayers to burden the costs when, in fact, if we set a policy that allows for those conversations to happen where we extract community benefit from development because we are zoning with the highest possibility of opportunity potential, that is where I think we all win. And that is why I keep on beating this drum, that we have a chance to bring both sides together and show direct community benefits and reopen the conversation for high-two in strategic places. You all know me. I'm not going to let one moment and one opportunity go by without fighting to the very last breath that this is possible. We can make this decision, and we can correct course and do what is warranted and what this community frankly desires and deserves, which is to directly take on the affordable housing crisis, to bring up our density levels to a place where we'll maximize affordable housing production. That is how you win. What we are trying to overcome is a 34-year policy that reaped two community benefit projects that never included one unit of housing. We have a pivotal opportunity right now. Each of us elected to office to set a 20-year policy that will benefit our kids, hopefully your future kids, and create a future for our community where we can grow old and our children have a place here. That's what this is about. That's what policymaking is about. And I really do believe that that's a conversation worth having, worth having yesterday and worth having today. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Newsom.
Rich.
Yeah, yeah, he did. Initially, he might have some more comments, but yeah. He's going to go again. Okay, Rich, Councilmember Hedges, please.
Yeah, I'll be brief, I think, I hope. I just wanted to clarify again on the Burrell. I had actually originally asked for high-one office is fine, but I want to have an option for mixed-use spelled out in the general plan, and that gains other advantages. For instance, different types of uses that serve the community, whether it's restaurants, daycare, whatever. So that would be one issue. On the Marriott, I'm also, if I wasn't clear before, good with mixed-use. The question on community benefits, I've always fought for community benefits and attempted and sometimes succeeded in getting them from development in my neighborhood. It's my understanding, Zach, that the state has really dumbed down on housing. What we can demand is community benefits, but still can't for office. Is that correct?
What was the question exactly?
So my understanding is because of trying to shortcut the cost and the items that are attached to development for housing, the state has dumbed down what kind of community benefits we can get if housing's built. Is that correct?
Yes, with the options available through state density bonus law, it does reduce the ability for localities to have a community benefits program that would be enticing for housing projects.
And so, but we can still do it with office. Can we do it with mixed-use if it includes housing?
We are working on that initiative, and we'll be coming back to council in the near future or relatively near future to further discuss that and how we could do that. But yeah, we are working with a firm that's looking at the economics and where potential avenues still exist. But overall, I mean, it is, community benefits are challenging, especially in this environment and when you have options under housing proposals.
So yeah, so where we can get it, I'm in favor of community benefits. But I just wanted to clarify that so no one is disappointed. Thank you. I think that's all for me now.
Thank you. Put your hand down, yeah. Yes.
I just think, I'm not sure, I wanted to ask Councilmember Hedges if it would be okay to just clarify your thoughts on the Marriott site, because I feel like I'm not sure we've heard it.
Yeah, I'm in favor of mixed-use. I would like to see some housing there. I think I remember years ago, when I first came here, that there was actually, well, 101 was four lanes to any direction, that there was actually an on-ramp off Concar onto Highway 101 going south. So that's out of the picture now. But yeah, housing is something that would be okay with mixed-use, and I would even do high-one there. So on mixed-use. So yeah, I'm good with hotels as well.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Newsom.
On the Burrell site, I am for mixed-use high. I think the neighborhood's support is there. As far as the Marriott site, I'm leaning towards mixed-use high, but I don't want to commit to that until I see more information about what traffic patterns are going to look like. I don't want to commit the neighborhood, which is right in the heart of my district, until I get a little more information. And I don't think we have to make that commitment tonight, but I am on record as definitely medium and potentially high mixed-use for that site. That's it. That's all I got. I think it's a great work on everybody's part. Everybody's covered so many things, I don't think I need to reiterate anything else. Thank you for all the hard work, and I'm looking forward to moving this measure forward.
Thank you very much. Before my sort of final question or comments, I had a couple of questions about when Ms. Watanuki spoke and asked for specific changes to help the Oshito Yamenuchi Historic District, sound wall, traffic circles, five-ton load limit signs, and rerouting construction. We're all saying we want to apply to the state to change those arterials. Can this, how do we put this in, understanding that we're going to eventually apply to the state to change it, from arterial to where we are now? Because we should be trying to support this, our newest historic resource. So how do we do that?
So really quick, Mayor, for a point of clarity, the house that you're describing, it's not a district, it's a site, it's a historical site. And that was, I just want to, there's a difference between the district and a site.
I understand that, yeah. So it's a collection of historic resources. It's a historic site. Right now, what we're saying is because the two streets on either side are going to be reclassified, we can't do things to protect that historic site, even though we're going to apply to the state to try and change those street types.
We do have an action in the general plan that we will be working to collect the data and then submit a request to the state. I think the key is the data needs to play out to support a classification change. So we need real volume data to show, is this street performing at a lower classification? And if we have the data, then we can submit that to the state and request a classification change. I do think it's worth highlighting that traffic on a street is not a significant impact to an adjacent historic site. We did review that with our historic consultant, and we haven't found any examples under CEQA where traffic or noise or air quality would be considered as something that is significantly impacting a historic resource based on its designation. So we didn't see a correlation between traffic volume and an impact to a historic resource on that street. But with regard to the classification, we do have an action to proceed in looking at that, and if the data supports it, we would make that request to the state.
And if we make that request to the state and the classification's changed, we will have data about what's going on on that street. And that might be in a year, but we could come back at that time and say, okay, here are, in conjunction with other things, here are changes we would like to make to try and protect the historic site.
It would just be a general plan amendment, basically. So once the state, not to protect historic site, but just to, you know, Caltrans, you know, working with the state, if they go ahead and delabel them not being arterials anymore, we'd come back and have a general plan amendment, period, to clarify that, that they're not arterials.
Right, but then I'm saying these things like, that have been suggested, like the sound walls or five-ton load limit signs or things like that, that's different than the arterial.
That is a whole different, my understanding, that'd be completely different.
Right, so I guess the question, at what point could we be discussing it with some data in mind?
I'm trying, go ahead, Chris.
I don't know that I have an answer for you, because typically, when we're looking at impacts to historic resources, it's the historic resource that's being modified, not the surrounding environments around it that are impacting the resource. So in my mind, this is sort of a reverse argument for an impact to a resource. And I don't know if our attorney has a different way of looking at that, but this is an argument I haven't seen before for an impact to a resource. So I don't know that we would be taking up something like that, and we wouldn't be undergoing a project. So we don't have a project. Usually, it's a project that triggers CEQA. And so here, I'm not seeing where there's a project that's creating an impact.
Yeah, I guess that just general, as if there is environmental damage to this historic site, what could we do as a city to help mitigate it?
So I guess the city is not undertaking a project. So if the city were undertaking a project, like building something, constructing, modifying something, where there was a project that triggered an environmental review such that we had to do a CEQA analysis, then we would be looking at all of the impacts of that project. But I think what I'm hearing here is that we're just hearing that this ambient street noise is the impact, but we're not undertaking any modification.
Correct, it's not, absolutely.
Right, so that would have to be some kind of council direction that for some other reason, because council felt that it was important to protect this resource from noise or from disturbance, that they wanted to direct this to happen. I mean, that's my understanding of it.
The only thing I would add there is that if there is a specific development project that would occur in the vicinity of that particular historic resource, then the CEQA impacts of that specific development project will need to be evaluated, including all of its potential impacts. I mean, in this case, I mean, in this case, like the project right now is the general plan itself, and that's been evaluated. And there are significant unavoidable impacts that have been identified, including such things as air quality and noise, and that's set forth in the statement of overriding considerations. But getting back to the original question, if there is a development project that's in the area, it would be individually analyzed at that time.
Well, yeah, sure.
Just wanted to see if I could add like a note related to this, which is, I do think part of the idea is that if the city is successful in getting the state to reclassify these streets. the city is successful in getting the state to reclassify these streets to something that relates to lower traffic, then I think the city could potentially look into traffic calming on those streets. And I think the combination of that lower classification and the traffic calming, which I think is part of what was asked in the public comment, would, I think, help in the preservation of the historic resource. I'll just throw that in.
Yeah, no, I, it's just, it's a tactical way in which, which order, so.
Through the mayor?
Yeah.
I have some historical background. I worked with Lori, God, I think in the 90s, to get public benefit out of Prometheus for some lighting in the area. And this has always been an issue, not just as a historic resource issue, but the trucks which come off of Humboldt to Fifth Street and make a left turn and actually go out almost the same way of tramping through the neighborhood of residential housing onto Amphlet for the businesses there. I think if we, and I have no problem with putting a limit on, on tonnage, but I think if we do it, we ought to be checking with the businesses along there to make sure that we're not precluding their operations as well. But it's been a long-term thing for the Central Neighborhood District.
Yep.
It's, they've, they've requested this for a long, long time. And maybe this is a time when we might be able to help them.
So maybe what I'll, I'll think is I'll put a pin in it right now. But once we can, we complete that application and persuade the state to change the name of the, the style of the street, then I would like to come back and look, as you say, at noise, at traffic, at all these things, which we've been talking about for a while. But that would be a, a future action. So, okay, then going on to the questions at hand. I'm fine with Burrell being office high. Marriott, I really do want that TOT revenue. I really, really do. And, but mixed use high, I could, I could be okay with. So then, I think those are the two questions at hand. And I think what I'd just like to say, it's a little bit of summation for me, having been on both sides of the, the dais and on, in the, the audience, that this really has been an incredible experience and to thank everybody involved, as we all have. And that the milestone belongs to everyone who's been involved for several, several years, certainly not just the people in this room. But I do think some people have said this is a plan that is status quo. I think this plan is far from status quo. It's a vision for the next 20 years, based on our values that we've talked a lot about, and what we want the city to be. And we've all made, each one of us, past, present, have made serious compromises to get here. There are parts of the plan that each one of us really are excited about, and there are parts of the plan that we would love to change. But it represents a big change to where we are now. And the fact that, that we are going to be having a ballot initiative about it, if it passes in November, we all have to put the, the ballot on, that, that itself states that this is a big change. And, but it's, it's also a living document. And I think that's what I've come to understand, that if we see the conditions or opportunities change, we can amend the plan. And we're already talking about amending a plan, the plan in the next month. So I believe finally that this general plan is a strong foundation for San Mateo's future. I'm excited to approve it with the, the notations that we've made and move on to developing a detailed implementation plan and start to create the exciting future that we all want for San Mateo. So I will vote to approve the general plan with the changes that we've talked about.
Mayor?
Yes?
Just for a point of clarity, so, so that staff knows the direction of the council, just on the two items for Burrell specifically. If you, if we heard some, so I saw, or I have down a majority of the council willing to move forward with mixed use high at the site? For, for, or I mean, office high, for, office high for the site. If we go with office high for the site, then this evening, that could, that action can be taken because the planning commission took up office high. But if you wanted to do mixed use high for Burrell, it would have to go back to the planning commission because they did not discuss mixed use high at the site. And I heard kind of going back and forth with, as I look at all my notes here, I, I heard office high and mixed use high.
Okay, well, why don't we go down the line?
Yeah.
Councilmember Lorraine?
So I initially said office high.
And?
And, and I, I do, I think I'm similar to Councilmember Lee in that I could go either way. I, I feel that office high is closer to what was, what, what's, it feels like a better fit based on what we have there. So I, yeah, I, I, I mean, that's, that's the initial, that's my, that was my initial thing. I'll, I'll stick with it at this moment.
With office high. Okay. Councilmember Hedges?
Mixed use high, I don't have a problem including office high in it. I think we could do both.
Okay.
It's just, he's saying either, basically.
Councilmember Lee?
No, I'm not. I want, I want mixed use high in there. I said, I don't, I don't mind if you also include office high.
If he'd, it has to be one or the other, though, Rich.
Yeah, then, then mixed use high.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Lee?
I have a slight preference for mixed use because of the flexibility and the neighbors' support for it. So, so if, if you're forcing a choice, I would say mixed use high. And there's also an opportunity to go back to planning commission. It wouldn't be adding another meeting. There's already a meeting to, to go back to them for the housing element. And I think that's appropriate.
I will stick with mixed use high.
Okay, I will stick with office high.
So I have a majority for mixed use high. Okay, thank you. So we'll bring that back to the planning commission after discussion with the housing element.
And I believe we had a majority saying mixed use high for the Marriott.
That's what I have down. And I see nodding heads too all around here.
We're super clear, clear.
Yes, that was clear. So we'd have to bring that back to you.
And then through the mayor, also, there were two edits to hotel-related policies to support TOT. Is there consensus on council to include that? And that, that is something that you could add to the general plan tonight as part of your action, if there's support. But we were recommending that, so we wanted to make sure council weighed in on if, if there's support for that.
I support TOT.
Well, do you support the amendments that they're proposing? Yes, I think. Yes, okay. Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes, I support those as well.
Okay, Councilmember Lee, yes. Count, Deputy Mayor Newsom, yes.
Keep our hotel, please.
Mayor, yes, yes. So we have, yes, many yeses.
We have the direction we need.
Okay, do you need a vote?
We need it.
Yes, you do need.
I'll make a motion. So we need, I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to certify the general plan's final ER, sorry, EIR, and adopt a resolution adopting Strive San Mateo General Plan 2040 and the Climate Action Plan Technical Update based on the listed findings.
Second.
Second. Give it to the council.
Okay. Deputy clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Deputy Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Mayor Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Congratulations. There we go. Yay! Everybody, stand up, yay! Now we have to just go do it, right? The, the hard work is about to begin. 30 seconds, cheering. Does anybody need a bio break before? Yes, okay, we'll take a quick bio break and come back quickly so that we can list, talk about our priorities and thank you for, we're smiling still.
Like that?
All right. Okay, we are back. Thank you very much for hanging in there with us. We are now on to old business. The city council priority list, review draft priorities and overall updates. And Ms. Denise Garcia is going to take us through this. Thank you.
Sorry, I just need a little support here.
Hi, I set you up so well here.
Thank you to the lovely Martin. And thank you, everyone, for being here. We have a crowd, so I'll try to get through this as quickly as possible. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. My name is Denise Garcia, Management Analyst in the City Manager's Office, and I'm here to present a draft review of the city council priority list. The next steps for the city council are to review the priorities and proposed work plans for fiscal year 2024 to 2025 to see if they adequately address the council's original intentions and expectations. I'd also ask for you to review additional resources required, the resource intensity, and lastly, recommend adjustments to any of the columns reviewed in this draft priority list. Here's a timeline of the city council goal setting process. The first step of the process took place on February 3rd, where a city council reviewed the current list of priorities, proposed new ones, and removed completed and operationalized items. The second step is today, March 18th. City council is going to review the draft priority list and the proposed work plan items. The third step in the process is the approval of the priority list for 2024 to 2025 fiscal year, which will take place on April 15th as a council consent calendar approval. The final step is a progress report that typically takes place in around between September or October. Today's review is going to consist of the following sections, which is proposed priorities review, modified existing priorities, and lastly, proposed modifications by staff. So following the Blue Sky workshop, staff made adjustments to the wording of several items based on your feedback. This was staff's best attempt to word the city council's intention and create a work plan for the upcoming fiscal year. Staff is requesting your review at this time, and this is an opportunity to provide comments or suggestions on the wording of each of the priorities and the proposed work plans. We want to ensure that the priorities and work plan reflect your original intention and address any of your expectations. The last two items we'd like you to review are the additional resources and resource intensity for each priority. The additional resources are estimates of additional resources that we'll need, and most of them are actually included in the upcoming budget request. Many of the priorities also don't actually indicate any additional resources, and that's probably for two reasons that I have up here. The first is that resources are already included in this current budget, and the next one is that the initial step is typically a study session, followed by options for you all to consider on how we move forward. So until direction is provided, we won't really have resources identified for implementation. In most cases, just because it doesn't have any additional resources listed doesn't necessarily mean there are no additional resources needed to complete the item. It's important to note that the additional resource column only identifies the need for this upcoming fiscal year. And it's also important to note that the resource intensity level provides a high-level estimate of the intensity of resources needed to commit to a full implementation of each item, which may go beyond the upcoming fiscal year. So there's a lot here. So I hope you have your handy spreadsheet available so that I can move a little bit swiftly through this. These are all the items that are actually highlighted in yellow on your spreadsheet. So I'll just name them. I'll name the proposed priorities, and I hope that you had a chance to review the work plan and the resource intensity and the resources required. So the first was to create a comprehensive, ongoing city-wide communication outreach and engagement program. The second one is to create a capital infrastructure plan or process for reinvesting in infrastructure to allow the city to evaluate city facilities and assess and assets when upgrades are needed. And the third is provide greater support to business development centers or mixed-use development areas to increase economic vitality. The next ones include explore adopting a gardening waste ordinance, explore a resolution affirming the city's commitment to integrate new technologies such as artificial intelligence without displacing workforce, expand youth and senior workforce development and civic leadership opportunities, increase organizational capacity to support Toyanaka Sister City Program within the Parks and Rec and City Clerk Department, conduct an annual transportation review. And I have an asterisk here that symbolizes this is a strategy towards achieving the Vision Zero policy. The next one is explore highlighting a city grant fund, improve and strengthen democratic systems and decrease polarization, implement a robust year-round downtown activation program as part of our core city services. And lastly, one more to go over, is enable more quick-build bicycle micro-mobility pedestrian projects. Again, I have an asterisk here symbolizing that it's a strategy towards achieving Vision Zero. I do have a note on this one that our city staff have proposed a modification to the written priority, which is to prioritize planning, design, construction, and maintenance of rapid safety improvement projects citywide and ensure there is a reliable city fund for long-term success. The next items are modified existing priorities. So these are identified in green or highlighted in green. The first one is study resource feasibility for the downtown grade separations and long-term train corridor improvements. The next one is enhance citywide disaster response and emergency preparedness. And the last one is establish policies to decarbonize existing buildings and infrastructure and eliminate methane gas by 2030. This last slide are all the proposed modifications that staff have shared with us. So rather, on the left-hand column are the priorities that currently exist, and on the right side of the table are the proposed modifications by our city staff. And again, there's an asterisk here on update general plan that just says that there's a Vision Zero policy already included in the general plan. So the next steps for you all are to review the priorities and proposed work plans for this upcoming fiscal year and to ensure that we adequately addressed your intentions and expectations. We would like you to review the additional resources required and the resource intensity. And lastly, recommend adjustments to any of the columns reviewed in the draft priority list. And I also welcome our department heads who are here or listening in to provide any responses to some of your more specific questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You did that in record time. I almost could follow along. Councilmember Hedges, what comment or questions do you have?
Actually, I think that was pretty much a review we did have. I did, the green waste was one of my issues, which actually Public Works said much of it can end up in the lagoon. And I know a lot of our flooding in D4 was from clogged drains from leaves and other things. So I actually had a conversation with the police chief, and we're going to go more in-depth on the 21st, but he told me that they didn't see it as a real problem for him if we got to the point where it was an ordinance, because they treat it just like they did with the smoking ordinance. So I've tried to do already a little outreach on it. So I think it's an issue as time has come. I know that where I live, we collect all of that, and it goes into the compost pile.
Great, so you don't have a question about that?
No, so that's just, I think, I really don't have, I think all of those things were pretty judicious. I really think they were all straightforward. I'm good with everything on that list.
Great, Councilmember Lorraine.
Yes, thank you to the mayor. Thank you, Denise, for your presentation. I wanted to ask about priority 37, which is complete all, this, the, and, you know, the existing language might say complete all high and medium-high priority projects in the 2020 Bike Master Plan and the Pedestrian Master Plan, but staff proposed different language. It proposed changing it to continue implementation of all high and medium-high projects, priority projects in the 2020 Bicycle Master Plan and Pedestrian Master Plan with the goal of prioritizing quick-build projects where feasible. And I just wanted to ask if staff could talk a little more about what that effectively changes and the impetus behind the proposal.
Ask our Public Works Director to come on up.
Good evening, thank you for the question. I don't think practically it changes a whole lot other than we tried to recognize with the additional language of prioritizing quick-build projects where feasible, that there's been a lot of community interest in that. I think it ties into one of the other priorities that you provided in the Blue Sky session. I think the challenge we have with timing on this is that we just currently don't have the resources to set a timeline on how long it's going to take us to implement all the high and medium priority projects in the Bike Master Plan. So I think we can leave it the way it is. This is currently in the category of items to be completed in five or more years, so it's ambiguous as to how long it's going to be. I think that's the biggest issue we have, and so that's why we thought changing it to just continue implementing it is, makes more sense to us in terms of we're going to continue doing it as long as it takes, as opposed to having something in there that says that we're going to complete it, even though it is ambiguous in terms of five or more years. So I think, you know, if the preference is to keep the language the way it is, I don't see a big issue with that. We would potentially recommend adding the last clause there about prioritizing the quick-build projects where feasible as part of it.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. And I see Denise, in the presentation, there were some asterisks to highlight relevancy to Vision Zero on some of the priorities. I think I just want to quickly confirm on priority nine about conducting an annual transportation review, that, you know, I kind of had tried to put an asterisk of my own on that earlier that sort of allowed for the first review to explore opportunities to, and options to expedite a Vision Zero action plan. And is, is that still something we can do in our first review as currently written?
I think I'll be the one to take that one as well. So as you know, adopting the general plan, as was done a few minutes ago, included adoption of a Vision Zero policy. And one of the actions in the general plan is to develop a Vision Zero action plan. So I think the good thing is that the plans that we're currently working on in terms of the local roadway safety plan and the Complete Streets Plan are going to get us probably 80% there towards a Vision Zero action plan. There's still some more work that would need to be done. But so that's why, from a staffing perspective, we thought that we can potentially create the Vision Zero action plan next fiscal year with the existing resources that we have. Some of it is connected to a position request that will be as part of the budget package that would free up some of our staff time. So that would be sort of conditional that if the council approved that position, then I think we can do that with the existing resources. If we don't get that position, then we might need a little bit of resources for consultant support. So I think that we can move forward on that. And the annual transportation review is something that is not a big lift for us because we already provide sort of quarterly updates on those to the SIC Commission. So I guess it's a question of, of timing of when we'd want to do the annual transportation review. And if, I think, you know, our expectation is that we could start moving forward on the Vision Zero action plan now that the council has adopted the general plan. And so we could set the timing up to be such that we could report out on developing that Vision Zero action plan, or we could do the annual transportation review sooner and have that be sort of a first step towards the guidance from council in terms of developing the action plan. So not sure if I'm answering your question, but I think our intent is to, we would be able to move forward on developing the action plan. The big challenge with the action plan is that, that's the action plan, and the real, the real challenge is for coming back to council and saying, how do we dedicate the appropriate resources to move forward on implementing that plan, which is part that we don't have, you know, the, the current resources allocated towards implementation of a long-term plan, because it will incorporate all the things like Complete Streets Plan, the local roadway safety plan, that's going to require probably potentially decades and tens of millions of dollars for some of the infrastructure-type projects that we'd need to do.
And I can build on from our Public Works Director. So now that the council has adopted the general plan formally, what we'll do is we'll come back in probably the June-July timeframe to really lay out, what's that implementation strategy now? What policies are we going to take on first? And so that's the opportunity for the council to weigh in and let us know exactly what the priorities are and what we're going to take on in that upcoming year. What are we going to tackle first? Because there's a lot of policies within this new general plan that was just adopted. And so we're going to need council direction. As the Public Works Director stated, we're 80% of the way there. So now we got to really think about, do you, do you want to, you know, move that action forward in that first year? And that'll be the opportunity to weigh in on that.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. Just confirming, Denise, that $50,000 on, with regard to the priority 25 for exploring a city grant fund would be maybe the anticipated amount of money that could be offered through the fund for the first year?
So I can jump in and answer that as well. So as we build, we're working right now, I'm meeting with every department just on budget asks currently. And so still trying to get the full picture for all the asks, but that, this is also one of the items that I have out there to look at, dependent on council direction this evening. The $50,000.
Yeah.
But that's kind of what we're looking at right now as an initial start.
Right, okay. Thank you. And with, you know, as we look at all these priorities and see, as you noted, like a mixture of some that don't necessarily need additional funding at this moment, some that do. You know, could we, as a council, theoretically say yes to everything at this point? Or would there be an issue with that? Are there, I, is, you know, do we talk about trade-offs with regard to that now or in April or at another time?
So right now, if, you know, in tabulating, really, you're looking at between 1.2 and 1.5 million total, but the majority of it is already part of our budgets, whether it be in CIP or operationalized already. So that's already accounted for within our upcoming budget. And I just really appreciate the council being really realistic in this blue sky and really, you know, thinking about bringing your top three priorities because I believe that it's realistic that we can make some really good traction in these areas specifically, and that we can actually meet our funding commitments specifically to deliver. A lot of these items, they'll be initial, you know, you'll have a study session, and we're going to have to look at next steps. And there'll be future years to see if we have the funding resources to actually implement on some of these items. And so I could say, you know, looking at the quick-build item that you'll see in there, there is money set aside, and that's also what we've put in the CIP for the, I'm going, we just went over a meeting today, actually, about this with staff. And so that's all in there as well. So I can say that we're accounting for the lion's share of the ask right now, the monetary ask as part of our budget.
Excellent, thank you. No further questions at this time.
Yeah, I think Councilmember Hedges remembered a question he had.
Now, this is just someone who's in favor of Vision Zero. I have to tell you that I've gotten some comments by email on using Measure S money. I'll make it very clear that I ran the campaign. The city sent out informational mailers on it, and we sent out political mailers. And at each one, people were promised the money would be for flood control, street repair, police, and library. And I don't want those funds dug into. We'll find the money somewhere else because it's important that we keep true to what we've told people we're going to do. At least I feel that way since I was responsible for putting much of the information out.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Lee.
I could just respond that we are utilizing Measure A for, for exactly that. There's, there's a portion being allocated. I checked in with our Public Works Director earlier today. There's also Measure A. So as part of that bucket that you're seeing within the item, there's a blending of different funding sources that will go in for that priority.
But no Measure S funds?
No, there is Measure S funds in there too.
There is?
Matt?
There is an ongoing allocation of Measure S funds that are going to our TAPS program, the Neighborhood Traffic Action Plans. So it's not specific to Vision Zero, but it's addressing some of the issues that were raised by the neighborhoods. So it's not necessarily quick-build projects. It's, you know, projects that were identified by the neighborhoods. So there has been an ongoing, I think it's $100,000 a year allocation that's going towards the traffic action plans.
And it's the streets.
The smooth streets, yeah. The smooth streets is coming out of that for reconstructing the failed streets, but this would be separate in terms of traffic, you know, speed control types of things that were identified by the neighborhoods in terms of specific things they wanted to see in their neighborhood related to traffic improvements.
That's not what we told people when we ran the program. So just leave it at that.
Okay, I think we have another discussion on this another time. Okay, Councilmember Lee.
Yes, I, I guess I wanted to ask for clarification about the, the priority of improving and strengthening democratic systems and conducting educational outreach and information to current and future voters and post-election review campaign ordinance with councils. So that strikes me as very much the status quo of what we already do. So I'm, I'm trying to understand how this is a net new.
So this was part of the Blue Sky. I know that it worked, it went from a discussion, and I'm recalling right off the bat, from ranked choice voting into a more general discussion or actually direction to be able to look at educating and informing the community further just about elections process. I know that, and I could look at our city clerks team to describe more about what we were looking at, but I know that the transition to district elections and then also the follow-up of just how the new, new system has worked and really talk about any feedback and updates from that. And I know that we typically do that, from my understanding here, after each election cycle. cycle, but having a more robust conversation about what worked, what didn't work, and things to look at further. But I'll defer to our city clerks team.
Yes, for this blue sky priority, when we looked into what was proposed initially, as, as city manager mentioned, there was discussion on models such as ranked choice voting, evaluating their utility as it relates to strengthening the democratic process. I think what, what's outlined currently within that priority would be for staff to go back and take a look at what options exist, what other cities are doing in this area, return to city council with a study session with a range of options. And then the council could provide further direction at that time, which, which specific areas of focus you would like staff to consider.
If I could just jump in, we had a long discussion about this, and this is what we agreed to. We did not agree to ranked choice voting. We agreed to this. So I think it was pretty.
Yeah, so, so I, I concur. I, I absolutely concur that ranked choice voting was not something that we agreed to. I guess what, what's where the, you know, the sort of line of questioning is, is that I guess I would, I, I don't feel like what Martin said is actually really clearly articulated in this description. And so what I, what, when we were kind of discussing what a, what a review, like a more robust review could look like, right? Which is, you know, which is not really, I guess, maybe a post, post-election review of giving words. I guess, you know, what I was envisioning is something like, you know, having benchmarked data on voter turnout, right? Doing a review of what kind of voter education efforts we, we did, right? And that we resourced and that we helped drove, all things that we, you know, we don't give ourselves enough credit for and, and, and aren't really creating space to showcase, right? And then we're not really measuring that effort against impact in a, in a concerted way, right? And then on top of that, the conversation that I was interested in, in, in having is, as, as Martin discussed and it's, and looks like captured very well, is the idea of looking across multiple jurisdictions at, you know, at best practices to increase voter turnout, to increase transparency. For example, you know, we, the city was the first in the county to launch the campaign finance dashboard, right? Where are there gaps in the campaign finance dashboard? How can we continue to iterate on that, you know, that pioneering initiative that, that the city led, thanks to, you know, my collaboration with the, with the League of Women Voters and Common Cause? Those are, from my perspective, the, the kind of examples of robust review that I have in mind. And so I just want to make sure that that's fully and completely articulated in, in this action item, because it, it kind of reads a little bit status quo to me.
So you said a lot more eloquently than I did, because what we were trying to do is really focus on our education information and then just how we do and really look, you know, it's kind of a, after the whole event, how it all worked out. But you're saying that you went into more, but I guess I haven't been here for, to hear what those items have been, so I would defer to our city clerk, Patricea, if you want to talk further. But, you know, I totally hear you, just got to make sure that everybody, I'm putting our city clerk on the spot here, but I would, I would want to see concurrence from the rest of the council.
Is that, I mean, did I capture what we were saying, right? Those are the things that we were talking about.
I do remember the conversation at, at the Blue Sky meeting about a more robust after-election action and to include more data points and comparisons so that we have more measurements, more metrics. And I think we can probably have a rewrite of the explanation there, and city clerk's office will work on that with the city manager's office to capture it better.
Thank you. Thank you. That means a lot. As, you know, as I get further down the road in this job and realize like, you know, you know, the things that I talked to Drew about, you know, I can't say, hey Drew, remember when we did this? Because like, it has to be in writing. And they're looking ahead, you know, one of our, our greatest historical assets here in the city, you know, who has the memory of the elephant of our city. So I will, I will just say, I appreciate that and appreciate your considering my feedback on that. And the other, you know, the other council priority was, was to expand youth and senior workforce development and civic leadership opportunities and centralize, the action item being centralized internships for youth, young adults, and improve our volunteer program to attract and retain volunteers, especially our seniors. And so I, I guess I, I was hoping that, I was hoping that we would have for this action item, a, get closer to a more expanded, like, like, take action on, you know, opportunities to expand existing internship programs through partnership with ETA, right? Those are the kinds of concrete commitments that I am looking for, because, you know, as was mentioned, we actually have an internship program, longstanding internship partnership with, you know, CSM. And I, you know, I think that there's, the model is built, right? How do we, how do we continue to extend and expand something that's clearly already in place? So I'm, I'm specifically looking for hard commitments in writing that are explicit.
I think that's a pretty easy ask for us. We can go ahead and build that one out to be more specific. And I think the ceremonial item tonight gave us a lot of things to put in there, working with ETA and working with our business community as well as our, our schools. And so we can do that.
Two for two. I like it. And then I'll stop there. I think, I think I'm, I think I'm good with my questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Hedges, is your hand raised with a new question or is it still just raised? Do you have another, do you have another question? Oh, you're muted.
I'm trying to get my meeting off. No, I'll lower my hand. It's my fault.
Okay, no worries, no faults, just checking. Okay, Deputy Mayor Newsom.
One thing that occurs to me, and I don't know if we need to talk about this, but we still are woefully understaffed here in the city of San Mateo. And is it gonna, will there be an impact by the fact that we have so much, we need to hire so many people? Is that going to have an impact? And if so, should we be considering adding, or is hiring already a priority, just not covered here? I guess, asking two different questions.
I'm already on here. So attracting and retaining employees is a top priority. That goes without saying. I guess that's already something that we're really working aggressively on. It's, it's wonderful to report out that we have 75 new hires since July of last year. That's huge for a city our size. And we're going to continue at the same time. But yeah, no, it goes without a doubt, that's a priority for staff, because the city, you know, we're run, it's by the people. And so, yeah.
So I guess I'd just say on behalf of myself and everyone that we support that effort, even if it's not on here, it's, it's there.
Yeah, no, it's, yeah, exactly.
As far as the CIP plan, I didn't quite understand what the additional, I mean, the additional resources are. A budget is required for a CIP plan, facilities, infrastructure. Do we have an idea of what that looks like as far as, is that a, hiring a consultant and?
So it's a significant investment, yes. So, so what is going on is basically, in order for us to position ourselves to deliver our CIP program, one is we need to conduct a facility assessment. So that's built into the CIP this year. It's a $600,000 investment, and we would get a firm to go out and look at every single structure we own here in the city and let us know the condition of the structure. And then from there, we can come back and work with staff to figure out just what our, what our next steps overall are to be able to prioritize and list the trade-offs. Additionally, we're looking at having an organizational assessment completed in our public works department, specifically our capital improvement programs unit. And that's part of this as well, so that we can be more efficient and provide more resources, because it takes people to deliver these projects too at the same time. And so we'll be taking a look at that as well. So those are just, you know, and then also doing an annual report out basically of, of just the achievements overall and the metrics.
I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Denise. I'm wondering, priority number one, given the recent action or in lack of action by the Ninth Circuit, does that impact this at all? I mean, you know, in terms of reach codes and?
I think it's a broader policy that you're, that you're referring to than, than the reach codes. It's, I think I'll just leave it there more or less. It's because this, this item to establish policies to decarbonize existing buildings and infrastructure and eliminate methane gas use by 2030, that's, there, there's some overlap between what the reach codes were trying to achieve, but it's also different in some ways as well. So I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, that's fine. Let's see. So number 16, the CRM system. What will, what will this get us? A CIP request of $100,000. That seemed pretty slim to me, given.
So what staff is going to be looking at is, we're looking at all our inputs. So basically, anywhere where the public goes ahead and has a request or an ask here with the city, and we're looking at our current systems and what customer relations management software would actually be able to talk efficiently with all our existing systems. And so what we look at is about $100,000 initial investment. Typically, you'll see an ongoing license of about between $30,000 and $40,000, but that $100,000 would be that initial seed money, potentially. It's a lot of cloud-based systems, and what you'd have is basically an app on your phone, click and be responsive. And then we can also do a good job of tracking any inputs that are coming in and be able to have the feedback loop at the same time to the public and for staff and for the council.
So the $100,000 is sort of to cover the evaluation of what, what are the data points? What do we need? What's out there?
Every, it's basically everything and potentially to actually buy the initial cost to buy the CRM system, and then there'd be an annual license fee moving forward.
It's a good bargain if you can get all that for $100,000.
Well, we looked at other cities too and what they have, so.
I'm, I'm very happy with that.
We'll let you know if something changes, but that's my understanding.
Great, excellent. And then in number 17, where we're talking about a $75,000 grant writing consultant, are there, I didn't see a lot of priorities that had grant writing consultants attached to it. And that, I think, is a huge opportunity for us.
So staff, so we actually have a request for proposal already drafted, but we're waiting for the upcoming budget, because we need staff to, in order to help support this, because even if we go get consultants or grant writers, there has to be staff that's feeding them the information and coordinating and managing the process. And so as part of the budget request this upcoming year, we'll be staffing that position, and then we'll actually release at the same time, if the council goes ahead and adopts this approach, to get a citywide grant writing consultant, so that we can compete, because that's one of the other ways that we have to look at to fund all the capital improvement projects that we have. And so we want to use other people's money first before we use our San Mateo taxpayer funds.
I think that is just such a huge priority. So I agree. Okay. Let's see. That we don't need. Oh, okay, in terms of the structural issues at the Marina Library, will that, how will that impact ongoing operations there? Who am I talking to?
The library's going to have to be shut down for a period of time for us to do the work. So we're looking at all the things that we can do while we have that offline to make sure that we're upgrading other systems. It's not just the foundation settling issue. So we're looking at fire issues and HVAC issues and things like that. So it'll be off for a period of time. I can't say off the top of my head what, how long it would be out of service for, but the intent is to make as much improvement as we can while within the resources that we have.
Okay, and I guess the question would be to the head librarian, you know, what opportunities are there to backfill, right? Partner with other places so that, because that's a large community that's served by that branch. But that's not for you to answer.
It's not a public works question.
I appreciate that.
That's even more reason why we're working towards the mobile library and making sure that we're ready to rock and roll with it throughout town.
Yeah. Oh, get back to it, yes. Yes.
Through the mayor. I, that brought up a question that I had. Yeah, that's a very popular library. When they were going to close it at a point when we were several years ago, Carol Grum was still in the city council, I think, there was really an outcry from the neighborhood. They really loved that library. But the one question I have, given the sort of upshot of what's happened with Wendy Hill, my understanding originally, they were going to participate in helping us with that work, is if they can no longer do that, and that's just a supposition, is that going to hinder what we can do with the library? Anybody?
Through the mayor, I would just say we had, had not gotten to a point where we had any commitment from Wendy Hill, so I don't think our situation has changed.
I think public works, we're proceeding, you know, with, with what we have, and we've got grant funds and city funds, and so we don't see any issue with completing what we need to do with the funds that we have.
50% of my household is very interested in that, since she worked there.
We got it. High priority. Okay, in terms of the library space master plan, obviously there's no funding, plus the fact that it's very old, we need to redo it altogether. Is this a project that we would be going, using a grant writer to go get money in order to do? That there's like no money on, on top of no money for this?
I would think so.
Okay, just wanted to be clear.
Yes.
That's it for my questions. Thank you. So let's open it up for public comment.
Members of the community would like to speak on this item, please deliver a yellow speaker. To me, it is possible. If you're attending via Zoom, please raise your hand. I'll give you a moment to do so. We will announce the last speaker. Madam Mayor, we have a total of four speakers.
Brave souls. Okay, they got three minutes.
Our first speaker will be Bry Myers, followed by George Misante and Robert White.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bry Myers. I'm a resident of 19th Avenue, a parent and PTA president of Sunnybury Elementary. I'm here tonight to, on behalf of the 13 different PTAs that voted to sign a letter that you received, asking for Vision Zero. Sorry, I'm a little sleepy. It's midnight.
It's okay, we're here with you.
Right, I know, I'm impressed that you guys do this regularly. The Vision Zero Action Plan and then Safety Quick Builds and Problems Intersections. We really appreciate the priority items nine, 24, and 37, that you guys built everything into this, this year's priority plan. We really appreciate it. We, you were, we were heard and we appreciate that. We did just do a little research though, looking into Measure S funds, because we had been told that that might be a funding source, and it looks like those Measure S funds are quite broad. From even like the city website, it says that you can use them for city infrastructure, improve the city streets, emergency medical services, police, library, public works, parks, and recreation services. So I think within that super broad definition of what the Measure S funds can be used for, we can find some room for quick builds, for safety, for intersections, for kids to get to school, and just like the residents of the whole community. So. So Measure S funds for quick builds and improving the bike, or putting those quick builds through the Bike Master Plan and Pedestrian Master Plan would be super awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our, just announced our last speaker in this item will be Mike Swire. Our next speaker will be George Misante, followed by Robert Whitehair.
Madam Mayor, city council members, city staff, good morning. My name is George Misanti and I am currently a board member of the San Mateo Sister City Association. I retired from the City Park and Recreation Department in 2008 after 35 years of service. I'm here to ask your support for Councilwoman Lee's new proposed increase in organizational capacity to support Toianaca Sister City programs within the Park and Recreation Department and the City Clerk's Department. I've been actively involved in Sister City programs since 1979 and have been part of every exchange between the two cities for these past 45 years. This past October, we celebrated the 60th anniversary of the signing of the official documents establishing our sister city relationship with Toianaca. Then Mary Lee led a delegation to Toianaca, and she did a great job, by the way, thank you, and was able to experience firsthand the incredible bond of friendship and goodwill that exists between our two cities. Just last week, we hosted two city employees from the city of Toianaca who were traveling to Mexico, but first made assure to add a stop to visit their sister city friends in the city of San Mateo. The Sister City program is alive and well. We are working on expanding our sister school program in which elementary and middle schools establish a relationship with a school in Toianaca and meet on Zoom on a regular basis and share their experiences about growing up and school life in their respective countries. After a COVID inducted break, we are preparing to restart our high school ambassador program, which sends two students to Toianaca for a week's stay and a home stay. We will once again be hosting the top two finisher of the Toianaca English Speech Contest in early summer, not to mention preparations for hosting a goodwill youth baseball team in 2025. As you can see, the state of our sister city relationship is very strong and very active. In all my years with the Recreation Department, there was never any official designation or assignment of duties to any staff member in our department. I don't recall having any line item in our budget allocating funds or staff resources for sister city support. While the operation of the Sister City Association and its programs is done with volunteer leaders from the community, there is no way we could provide these outstanding programs and exchanges without the incredible support we get from the city of San Mateo and the city staff. Excuse me. The city, the availability of city facilities for our meetings and fundraisers and the availability of city facilities, athletic facilities for our teams is crucial to making our programs a success. The interaction between our city clerk's office and their counterparts in Toianaca is crucial when we prepare for exchanges that include.
Thank you. Thank you, George.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
I was almost, I'm sorry. Thank you. And it's such a great program. Please support the added support that is necessary to keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Robert Whitehair.
Well, thank you, council, mayor, and members of staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. When I left for this meeting this evening, I told my wife I'd be back sometime after midnight and she kind of looked at me, yeah, right? Here we are at midnight. Thank you for hanging around and thank you for everybody listening online. I'm here tonight to represent the San Mateo Climate Action Team and thank the council for putting the decarbon objective so high on the list. Decarbonization, as you probably know, to me is very important. I've completely electrified my home. One of the things that I've learned recently is that there's quite a bit of funding now coming from Peninsula Clean Energy for the big thing we always heard about when we were taking this out in the city is what do you do about equity, low income, people on fixed incomes? I'm happy to report there's quite a bit of money now coming from PCE, from TechClean California, and from the IRA, which will come back also probably as direct install. And I also learned, and I know staff is already aware of this, that there's going to be a workshop this Friday on the, a grant for outreach into communities. San Mateo is a prime target for getting that kind of grant because of the work you've already done and because I think we can make a really good case that in many parts of our city, the low income community would tremendously benefit from having those funds from the IRA. I also, and I also wanted to point out on the transportation for the pedestrian and for the bicycling, the reason that's so darn important, climate change is about getting people out of their cars, dealing with the climate change, that is, is by getting people out of cars. If you make it safe for people to be on the roads, either walking or biking, that's more likely to happen. And the other one, we did send you a letter with those three items and the third one being socially responsible investing. I know some of that has already been taken care of, but we continue to push for, you know, adopt something like what the county has done in the way of a investment strategy, continue the city's commitment to having no investments in fossil fuels, tobacco and guns, acknowledge that the largest banks in the United States are heavily invested in fossil fuels, and really acknowledge that fossil fuel investments really underperform the market. So with that, I conclude. Thank you for what you've done. Please work as hard as you always have on decarbonization and on transportation and on socially responsible investing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Mike Swire. Mike, please unmute your mic.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. Thanks, everyone, for staying late. Mike Swire, sorry I didn't stick around. I am back home. I sit on the SMCTA, so there's a advisory committee and the CCAG Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, but I'm speaking as an individual. I want to thank the council and staff for incorporating Vision Zero into the master plan. That's a great step forward as a symbolic and strategy for the future. I want to clarify, however, that the problem is not the strategy necessarily or the type of work we're doing, it's the amount of work that we're doing. The issue is funding. I kind of got a little worried when I heard that we will be, now that we have Vision Zero, we're going to do a Vision Zero Action Plan. We have a local road safety plan that was just before the sixth. We have two complete streets plans, one of which was reviewed earlier today. We have a bike master plan that remains largely incomplete. We know what projects we need to do. We just need funding. Sue Ellen and Bethany's teams do great work, but they are tapped out. They need additional staff. So we shouldn't simply be reallocating resources. We should be expanding staff so that they can get more done. In the roles that I mentioned, we help allocate money for bike and ped projects across the county. And I know that there is money on the table that is not being taken advantage of because we are not getting grant requests, enough grant requests from the city of San Mateo and other cities across the peninsula. We do get some from San Mateo and they are very good. So I referenced the local road safety plan. It showed that in San Mateo, serious bike crashes are three times the state average. Pedestrian crashes are two times worse than the state average and intersection crashes are two times worse than the state average. I cannot believe that anyone on the council would believe that the status quo is okay. And if we do not, if we believe that it is not okay, we need to increase staff time. We can't simply go forward at the current rate that we are going. I know there's questions in terms of Measure S and such. I'd ask us to think creatively. If you showed up at 5:30 today, you noticed that there was a crash ironically right in front of the building. There was one ambulance, four PD officers, three PD cars, one paramedic, and one fire truck all there for an hour plus. I guess that would cost about $10,000. If you work that out to two crashes a day, that's $7 million a year we're spending on crash response. How about we spend close to that on crash mitigation and we can ultimately save us some money in upfront and save some lives in the process? So again, please spend money, additional money on additional staff so we can get more done. Thanks so much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, we have no further public comment.
Great. Thank you very much. We'll close public comment, bring you back to council for any final comments. Councilmember Hedges, is your hand up?
Yes. So I'm very much in favor of the Vision Zero program. I think one of the things we have to look at is Measure A has money. And at one point before Measure W, which a little more than doubled that money, we were doing about 10 projects every two years. There's more now. We really need to focus, not only with the state and Fed, but we really need to focus on bringing projects to the county, have them ready to go. And it's not a tremendous amount of money each time, but it's moving us in the right direction. So that would be one place that I would look for money and do it on steroids.
So Councilmember Hedges, we have Karen Hwang, our finance director. You want to come up and just speak to Measure A and Measure S as well? Because I know that we are prioritizing this here.
Measure A and Measure W, those are both counting money, one through the TA and one through San Mateo. It has bike and ped money.
I guess it's a good morning. So we do have Measure A money, about $3 million a year, really stable revenue coming from the county's allocation to the city. And it is one of the funding sources that we can use for the Vision Zero project. And, but that's only one of the options. General fund, if we have funding, we could allocate part of the general fund to fund this council priority as well. Measure S is another option, but Measure S projects usually have to go through the Measure S Oversight Committee for recommendation and you have to compete with other.